Hi, good morning. Today is May 2, 2019. We're going to begin today's work session. We'll start by standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the nation a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first discussion today is the Advisory Committee's annual report. It's the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee.
Actually, I think the first discussion item is to sing happy birthday to our councilwoman. For her birthday was yesterday, and she's thirty-nine, thirty-nine years old.
I'm thirty-five.
She retired early, so we should sing happy birthday.
You can sing, I'll listen, I'll mouth it.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Catherine, happy birthday to you.
See that? In another five years, you can join the Senior Citizen Committee.
I'm glad you're not doing what second graders did. Are you one, are you two?
All right.
I said, count by tens. Thank you, Councilman.
I will make a bad joke that we're starting with the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
Oh, my God.
That's true.
Let me read the book.
What a good segue.
All right, we have Joe Packard here with us, who will be reporting, be reporting on for the committee, and you have asked Ray Coyne from our Recreation Department to join us up here, so I will turn it over to you.
Okay, the summary of our accomplishments from May of last year to this year, we created a new mission statement, which assesses and addresses the evolving needs of our dynamic seniors, and we've created a vision statement, where we periodically review the needs and interests of the seniors aged sixteen over by utilizing feedback from the community for future direction. We act as a liaison between the senior community and the Riverhead Board, and provide up-to-date resources to our seniors. We made revisions and corrections to our senior resource guide, and we republished it. We published and distributed a map booklet, which talks about an aging plan. We amended our bylaws and guidelines for our Senior Citizen Advisory Council. We reestablished reappointment dates to four years instead of unlimited. We published a senior resource guide in Spanish, which we're very excited about. We developed a senior interest survey to assist with profiling the current and next generation of seniors, and the Town of Recreation rate is very involved in that, and can you share your involvement for that, Andrew Ray?
With survey?
Yes.
Yeah, well, first I want to say, this is, I've been here fourteen years, been on a lot of committees, this is the, by far, the best committee that I've sat on, from the selection of the members, to the agenda, to the leadership, to the accomplishment. So, I enjoy coming to the meetings, I enjoy speaking with Joe, we share a lot of good ideas together. As far as the survey, we're gonna, we first, we put it on our website, riverheadrecreation.net, so it's right on the front there, you can just answer it online, and it goes right to my email address, while I tally and give it to Joe. We're going to distribute it to the seniors at the senior center, and we're also going to bring it to programs, like we used to do at college, where the professors give out the evaluations, then collect it right then and there. So, they're going to go to all the adult programs, all the bus trips, we're going to do it at, we're also going to go around to the senior communities, a two-prong thing, we're going to invite them over to the senior center, and we're also going to give them the survey to see what they're looking for. God bless you.
Bless you.
And we also did an email blast, and we'll be doing that again, it's about four, five thousand people that we have in our email.
As of today, we have received one hundred and two surveys back, and they're already tallied. We changed the number of chairpersons for our committee, we now have three chairs, and we developed and instituted a new proxy, and we would like to thank Eric for his hard work with our committee. Fantastic. Our goals for the next six months are to review and revise MAP, My Aging Plan, publicized it, and distribute it. We're going to do an update and revise on our senior resource guide in English and Spanish, and of course, we're going to work on our senior interest survey with the collection of surveys, administration of the surveys, analysis and dissemination of information, hopefully by the end of the year, with recommendations to the community, including our town recreation requirements.
I think one little pinch we're going to add in there, that with the leaving of Judy Dahl from the senior center, things are going to be revamped a little bit, and changed, some changes will be made, and part of that is going to be that the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee is going to be more actively involved in what goes on at the senior center, with thoughts and ideas, and that's part of what the survey is about, a big part of what it's about, actually, to bring in and get the ideas, because the generation of seniors that are coming up now are physically more active, more computer literate, want to get out and go on the go, not just plunk down and maybe play bingo, not that there's anything wrong with that, but they seem to be a younger, whether it be, you know, medication, whether it be health, things have changed, and that's what's being addressed with the survey, and Joe is on top of it really well.
Also, we would like to, I would like to meet with you, because I have some recommendations with the change that happened with Judy retiring, I have a recommendation, because Ray and I have been talking about having representation of our committee in his department making recommendations, but I'd like to run some of those by you if that's all right.
Yeah, not only Joe has been a great leader of that group, they have, the selection of the members represents all the parts of the town, and that is a great feeder for us in the senior rec department, to suggest programs, to suggest trends that's going on, so it's great for us, so thank you.
And the trend is not just, quote, the senior, but it's the senior involved in the community, and intergenerational, so that's what I'd like to discuss with you, in changing recommendations for change in the structure.
And how the seniors interact?
Well, it would really, yes, it, the seniors' interactions based on some meeting with some groups already.
Okay.
And also, that would impact how the rec, in general, looks at programming.
Very good, I think that's, I think that's a, that's a good idea, I guess, I know, Ray, you keep a lot of numbers, we don't keep ages on the program, what age groups that are more appealing to some.
We don't put that out there, but we do.
Okay, so that, that, and that's been shared with you guys, because that would be interesting, too, to see what kind of programs are most helpful.
I have to share, Ray is on our committee, but I work very closely with him, and he's extremely supportive of our programming and our recommendations.
Oh, thank you.
Very good. So, do you want to just talk about some of the things that you have, what the Senior Resource Guide is, so people are, because this is, you know, it is televised, but just so how people can access it, what's in it, what's?
Okay.
And also, the, the, My Aging Plan?
We're very excited about MAP, My Aging Plan. We had the opportunity, the Westchester County has given us the privilege to take the MAP, which they created, we stylized it, and made it a little bit more current for our Riverhead citizens, and basically, it talks about the journey from age twenty up, and things that you need to consider, in terms of, as we mature, I don't like aging, as we mature, some of the things that you need to consider during your aging plan, financially, medically, and I strongly recommend that people take a look at it, because life is a journey, and these are some of the things that you need to start considering, as we mature, but you need to start in your twenties, especially today with financials.
I think you said it right, because if you look at the trends around the country, the verbiage on senior centers is no longer, it's different, it's like Silver Sneakers Club, things like that, we're not saying seniors anymore.
No.
Because it is a different generation.
It has a stigma to it.
Yes.
And most people who are maturing do not want to be classified, because when you think of a senior, it's not such a beautiful picture.
Hey, in the walk-up.
Right.
What is, I mean, the age or age, you know, ages change so much.
Yeah, and.
Thankfully.
Thank God, yeah. So, we look at it as a journey, and I look at it as maturing, that's my way of looking at it, because if I looked at my age, I would go like, ooh. The second thing that we did is, we created a resource guide in Spanish and English for the Town of Riverhead that lists state, federal, and town services that are available, resources in the event of an emergency, preparedness aspects. We covered resources in terms of medical, volunteering, veteran, a very broad scope of what's available for you, for individuals aged fifty-five and older, with phone numbers and email addresses. And this year was the first year we were able to do it in Spanish, and I have to thank Ray, because he got the first draft done for us, and then Reverend Salicido was kind enough to proof it with me before we published.
And how do people access that?
Well, you can access it on our website, or the library website, it's available in the library, Town Hall, you just have to request the pages you want, or a copy, and it's available at the rec center, and.
Hospital?
It's in the hospital, they just have copies in the rehab center, I believe it is.
Senior rec centers at some of the senior villages that we have in town?
It's also been placed in every fifty-five and older community, housing, we have them in there, a master guide.
In their, in the clubhouse, or in the house, so if somebody wants to go take a look at it, they could go there to take a look at it also?
We've had to chain them up in some places, because they tend to walk sometimes, but.
Well, there's a lot of great information in it, you know, it's like, it's a great reference guide.
I think we should think positively and put them at the gym. My gym has Silver Sneakers.
Next time we do publication, we'll give you a couple, we'll give you a couple of copies to put out.
It's a great place to put it out, because, you know.
Right, yeah, I see.
Vitalial change, gym, working out, things like that.
So, for your survey, I know that you've put it out, is, when would you like people to reply by, do you have a closing date for the survey?
We're hoping to by July, we'd like to reach a magic number, but we hope to end by July, so that we have a great volunteer who has been kind enough to actually put everything on a spreadsheet for us, that's my poor husband. He is responsible for doing all the tallying and inputting into the spreadsheets for us, so that we can sit down and analyze the information and share it. We're hoping by the end of July, but we would like a large diversity. We did get some as, not within our town, and I made the decision to include it, because they were in the fifty-five to sixty-five-year-old group, and I think it would be, even though they're not part of us, we have it from Mattetuck, the Hamptons, it was very interesting to see that their interests were the same as ours, so I decided to kind of.
And they come and use a lot of our programs?
Well, they're actually using our library.
Yeah.
We got those through our library program.
Okay.
And of course, the library is administering the survey and all their programs as well. We're into a couple of book clubs, so we're trying to get it out, and try to reach all the aspects of the town and its hamlets.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd like, we're going to develop programs based off those results, so that's, that's what's good about it.
We can shoot a letter out to the civics also, they can give it to their, their members.
And you could actually attach a copy of it, I believe Patrick has a PDF of it, if not, I can give it to him, and if they don't want to drop it off at Town Hall, they can mail it to this lovely gentleman over here, or.
I'll take a second, put him in the church.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
Oh, yeah, the churches are.
My church is mostly seniors.
Wherever we can reach out, if you could put it through the town departments, that would be great, because you have a sampling of people. You know, any place that you can disseminate it would be wonderful, because we want a sampling from every background, every hamlet, economic background, because we want to see, do we need to provide more transportation or not?
Okay.
Because transportation is an issue out this way.
Very good.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
By the way, clearly you're ahead of, you're ahead of the curve.
And this is excellent, Cliff, by the way.
Good job.
She runs a tight ship on the committee, and I will say that, of all the committees I'm on, this one gets stuff done, and it's orderly, and she runs a precise meeting. I think she invented Robert's Rules of Order, because she follows it to the tooth.
She does, she does.
And we're very lucky to have you, Joe.
Yes.
So, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
You did great.
Bye-bye. Next, next, we will go on to another Advisory Committee annual report, which will be Landmarks Preservation Committee, with Richard Wines.
Come on up, Stephanie.
Free PowerPoint here.
Okay, yeah, no.
Come on. Yeah.
Yep, we have.
Sure. I need chairs. You.
You.
We've got you.
How are you?
My fifteen moments of fame.
Yeah, absolutely. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Peter is here. Come on up, Peter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Come up, have a seat, we'll have everyone, so we can get set up, we'll have to introduce everybody, because we're on the camera.
Did you ride your bike here, too?
Hey, it's up and running, look at that, oops, it was, there you go.
That's good, there it is.
Oh, there it is, good.
Wow, that was quick.
How are you?
Okay, yourself?
Just to start, we're just going to have everybody introduce themselves.
There we are. Okay. Richard, do you want to?
We thought you might want to.
Yeah, do you want to introduce everybody?
We like a visual.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's the members of the committee, Stephanie Bale, over there, Cliff Baldwin, hopefully will be joining us, Peter Lucas, sitting next to me here, Georgia Keller is teaching.
Okay.
Kelly is not only working hard, but is also a brand-new mother, couldn't be here, Jim Mannan, over here, manning the computer, and you yourself, so, anyway, thank you for inviting us, and I think having these periodic meetings with the town board is a wonderful idea, so I'm glad that you've instituted, I think this is our second appearance.
It is, and we appreciate you coming, yeah.
Hasn't even been a year.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, next, Jim?
Starting to get on a cycle.
And just, a few days, just to refresh your mind, you know, people ask questions of town board members all the time, we do have resources on your website, our brochure is on the website, which explains all about what the Landmarks Commission does, next. Next, oh, yeah, good, and the other thing we have is, we have a set of guidelines for historic preservation on the website, next, and these have all kinds of detail in them, so you can, you know, if you need to replace your shutters, there's information about what kind of shutters you can put on, and anything else you could possibly want to do, are set up in those guidelines.
It's very comprehensive, it's really, really helpful.
Yeah, it's a great piece, but, you know, people ask questions, obviously refer them to me, or any other member of the commission, but also feel free to refer them to the Landmarks area on the website, next, I do want to just review briefly, we do have four town historic districts that the town board has created over the years, next, and the first one is, of course, downtown Riverhead, and this is very extensive, it stretches on the east from the railroad tracks, all the way to the Historical Society on the west, it stretches from the river up to most areas of the railroad tracks, but along Griffin and Roanoke, basically almost to the cemetery, so basically, all of downtown Riverhead is designated as an historic district.
Do you want to just explain what a historic, because just because we're, just so people know?
Right, this is the Jamesport Historic District, the hamlet of Jamesport, an historic district, it was designated because there are a lot of historic buildings there, and the intent was to help preserve those buildings, to make sure that alterations to the buildings are, help keep the character, the reason for doing it was, you know, that's one of the main assets that downtown has, is its historic character, and anything we can do to assure that that historic character is maintained, is going to be good for business there, it's going to be good for the new buildings there, it's going to be good for the town. One of the things I always notice, it's all the old stores that are occupied, it's not the newer ones that are occupied, it's the historic resources that have most of the business in, because of the right scale, and then they have some character, that's where the restaurants like to go, things like that, so, so the purpose of the historic district is to help preserve what's there, and to help make sure that, that new stuff is compatible with the historic material, doesn't overwhelm it, fits in with it, that sort of thing, is that an adequate explanation?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, and the way it does that, of course, is by some rules and regulations, so that both alterations and new construction has to be reviewed. So, next historic district, next, Jim, is the, virtually all of South Jamesport is an historic district, seventy, seventy-eight historic houses there altogether, we counted, I think, next, and, next, and Stephanie, you want to talk about Waiting River?
You want me to do the signage and everything, too?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Okay, well, as you probably know, it took hundreds of hours of preparation, and reaching out to people to create the district, as it did the others, I'm sure, and as you can see, it's actually not one line, it looks like a line, but it really isn't, because it does include offshoots, and, you know, even though it's on paper, and we know about it, I think a lot of people may not, especially newcomers, and we were thinking about possibly installing some kind of signage, I know you have a lot of signs, and a lot of people aren't crazy about too many signs, but it would be good to let people know, and just want, may I discuss my idea, or the one that I mentioned the other day, or just in general?
Go ahead, sure.
In a lot of places, there are too many signs, in Waiting River, my idea was to take these street signs, and possibly in a different color, put beneath the street signs, historic district, inhabit a different color, let's say red, and since it's not just one continuous area, another idea I had was to color coordinate that with possibly paint or stripes between the yellow lines in the exact locations, that would probably be the least expensive thing to do, you could put signs everywhere, but I don't know if that would be cost-effective or, or even better, you know, probably minimal is, is the best, but people, I think, need to know, that it has historic district, because people are, people who do know are very proud of the fact that, that it is historic.
And it makes you aware, as you're going past, you see, you know, houses that have been refurbished, and, you know, brought back to their, their historic character, saying, oh, that's nice, but when you know it's an historical district, it kind of gives it a little bit more emphasis.
Yeah, so I think it's good to, you know, to emphasize.
Some pride in the neighborhood, basically.
Yeah, exactly. It's a lot of work that goes into it.
And nationally, housing prices are higher.
In historical districts.
In historic districts, property values.
Good point.
The reason that particular mechanism works is because if you buy a house there, you know that your neighbor can't do something that would destroy the value of the district.
The house next door.
So, there have been studies in that, so, we're, so, we're working at ways, I've been talking with Don Thomas, and see if there's, might be some grants available, but we may be coming back to the town board for a little bit of help.
The signs, we actually make in-house.
Yeah.
So, that's, the, the cost of the signs are not, not tremendous, so I think, really, it's, you know, to the point of, how many signs do you want up, and, and, and how would they, you know, interface with signs that are already there?
Sure, I put them on existing posts, and that kind of thing.
We are doing some wayfaring signs downtown, is this something that could be incorporated into some of the wayfaring signs that we're doing, so I think if you come up with a plan of where you would like them, and then we can bring them to the other groups that are putting signs up, and see if they can get it incorporated.
Great, great, we already have signs in the downtown district.
Right, yeah.
Probably need a few more at the entrances, so the other three, and probably, we're talking about maybe a dozen, fifteen signs between the three other districts, so we'll work on that, and come back to you on that.
Okay.
That would be, that would be great.
And speaking of signs, one thing that I had brought up at work session was that we are looking for money for the landmark signs, for the buildings that are designated landmarks.
Black.
That comes up a little bit later, I haven't.
Okay, okay, good, I wanted to ask about that, too.
We take advantage of these opportunities, next, and, because we do have, in addition to districts, there are a number of individual buildings that have been designated as town landmarks, and these are generally situations where the owner has come to us and said, I want my house or office building designated as a landmark, because I'm worried about what's going to happen after I'm gone, and Peter has designated his house as a town landmark, Cliff Baldwin's barn is designated as a town landmark, Nancy and I have designated our house and schoolhouse as town landmarks, and there are, you know, sixty-two altogether in the town, next, the two newest ones are the Elks Lodge, or, and, next, and the Carriage House, and as Jody just mentioned, next, one of the things we're missing is, they would like to have flags, these are a little more than two hundred dollars a piece, something like that, so, hopefully, hopefully we can find that someplace in the town budget, it's just, since they're willing to designate their buildings, it's been a nice thing that the town board has always done.
Yes, and we're working on the tour also, for downtown, for the QR codes for the historic tour, so that you can stand in front of a house, use your phone, get the QR code, and then hear a little bit about the house, so we're working on that.
Yeah, I really like that.
That'd be a great thing to be able to do downtown, I know we've had some discussions with the bid about doing this, and so that people could wander out during lunchtime from the courthouse, and.
Right, see what the history is around them.
Yeah, exactly, because it's all there, and interesting thing, everything from the hangings to.
Well, it was very funny, I was at, I was over at the.
You don't want that part.
Wait, lynching?
You know, people, and also, just for, for, you know, tourists that come here, I was at the train station one day, and somebody came off and said, I'm not really sure where to go, what, you know, and then, so if they have a place to walk, or a path to walk around, and know what they're looking at, it creates a lot of interest.
Yeah, we actually did a walking tour brochure some years ago, and so our goal now is to modernize that, and put it in current technology, so that people can have it on their iPhones, or, you know, whatever it is that makes it work, we found the printed ones were hard to keep in stock anyplace, but if it's a little sign that says, pull out your iPhone.
Or your app, or GPS and all that, to tell you exactly where you are, where you're going.
Yes, well, I love the whole idea, it brings people into our downtown, and, you know, we should be proud of our heritage.
They, they did that for the Spies Tour in Stony Brook, it's an app, on your phone, you go through, it's great, yeah.
We have some interesting things, too.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Very good, okay, next, so, altogether, if you add up all these buildings that are in our various historic districts, and individually designated, there's four hundred that now have town historic designation, next.
Richard, just one question.
Yeah.
What if it's a historic landmark, but it's not in the designated area, like the Bating Hollow Church?
If it's a, if it's a town landmark, it, well, the town landmarks are, come under the same rules as if it was part of an historic district, so.
It doesn't need to be in a historic district in order to be deemed a landmark.
Yeah.
Okay.
Most of the sixty-two separate town landmarks are not in an historic district.
Okay.
Well, she, she made reference to the Bating Hollow.
Yeah, right.
The Bating Hollow Church is probably. It's very old.
Right, it is very old.
Hasn't been designated.
Came from the Swedish born church, was moved across, yes.
They move pieces around, and so forth, but they can have the same protection, the Sound Avenue Church was designated many years ago, for instance, the Grange Hall is designated, so.
But they apply for it.
They apply, probably.
The individual building has to apply for it to be designated.
Right, we, we tended not to designate individual landmarks unless the owner asked for the designation, or at least was agreeable to it.
Okay.
The town board could designate anything under the code, but that's, that's been the standing policy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, next, I just want to, we have also another kind of historic designation, and that's to put things on the National Register of Historic Places, and this brings a different set of benefits. The town board could designate anything under the code, but that's, that's been the standing policy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, next. Uh, I just wanna, uh, we have also another kind of historic designation. And that's to put things on the National Register of Historic Places. And this brings a different set of benefits and, and, um, and no restrictions. And I just wanna say, there's, most of Main Street is also on the National Register. You can see the area that's covered there to, um, almost, uh, well beyond East Street, uh, beyond Maple Street and the other end to Griffin Avenue. Um, and, uh, next.
And we were, uh, able to, uh, get this accomplished because there were so many. I mean, we had volunteers from Suffolk Community College that was doing the surveys and the architecture. And through the BOA study, we were able to write a letter to the state through the Community Development Agency and ask for the funding in order to create the, what we needed in order to apply for the national district.
And that got us the second district too, which is the district, uh, next. Uh, you know, just north of the Main Street district, the whole Second Street area, basically.
And parts of Third.
Yeah, it goes up to, goes up to the railroad tracks and across the Northwood Turnpike in some parts. And, um, so, so we put these two areas on the, on the National Register of Historic Places, next. Um, and the reason is because there's the benefits, uh, particularly tax credits. And when I was here, when we were here last year, uh, we had this picture of the Howell House.
It looks a little different now.
That, uh, wouldn't this be a great place for those, uh, next? Uh, this is still, I took this picture a few months ago, so I don't have a current one. But as you know, it looks a lot better because Mr. Petricelli has, um, you know, is hoping to take advantage of these tax credits and is fixing up that place. And that was one of the incentives that allowed us to do that. Next.
He had no choice, councilwoman, he didn't believe he made him.
Like he did a hundred years ago, uh, with that beautiful row. They were considered modern when they were built in nineteen oh six. And then they were beautiful. And there were a lot, this is just one of several postcards. It was done of that row of houses. And so this makes a ni- really nice entrance on the, uh, east end, coming in from the east on Main Street, next. Um, there are also, um, you can put buildings individually on the National Register. And there are twelve of these, uh, next. The most recent one was the Benson House in Waiting River. And any individual building is designated, uh, has the same, uh, possible tax benefits. Um, next. And so altogether, if you add up everything, there's a hundred and seventy-five buildings, uh, that are on the National Register of Historic Places. Next. And I just wanna summarize briefly what those benefits are again. Because first of all, it's prestige. Uh, if you're in a district and you put that nice plaque up saying, this has been recognized by the Secretary of Interior as being, you know, on the National Register. Uh, it's, um.
And it brings a sense of place to the community, you know, with the history.
Right, right. And, cause you have to demonstrate that history in order to get on it.
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, and it's not an easy process. It took us how many years in, uh?
Too many.
Seven years, I think, in the Second Street area.
We were very excited when that.
Everybody on the commission. Um, uh, for not-for-profits and churches, it, it can help facilitate grants as it did for the Congregational Church downtown, for instance. Um, it's a great way to promote tourism. Um, say this is a National Register district, uh, local businesses can benefit by saying that their building is on the National Register. Can go part of their advertising or whatever. Uh, it creates jobs because of the tax credits help, uh, bring about restoration, next. Um, of course, the most important one is the preservation tax credits. Uh, and there's two different kinds. There's one, if it's an income-producing property, and that can be anything from a retail store to a rental apartment. Um, there's a forty percent federal and state combined credit for major restoration projects. It has to be, you have to be putting a lot of money into the building, so only major projects qualify for that.
And it's just exterior, correct?
Um, actually, no, the whole thing.
It does, it does interior also?
It covers everything. Um, and, uh, then there's a separate credit. If you own your own home, you can qualify for a twenty percent state tax credit. And that one, uh, is actually relatively, relatively easy to get. And only has to be five thousand dollars worth of work. Um, and as long as you're doing, some part of the work is on the outside and it doesn't harm the historic nature of the building, you can put a new roof on with that credit, a new asphalt roof. So, uh, you know, that's another major benefit for, um, uh, National Register designation. And of course, as Peter mentioned earlier, it does support, uh, real estate values. But the nice thing about National Register designation, it doesn't bring any additional restrictions. It, it's, it's all carrot. And, and there's no stick involved in that one. Uh, and it can help prevent some unwanted state or federal actions, like street widening. It might destroy an historic resource or something like that. Which brings us to our next goal. Um, and that's back to Main Road. Do you wanna talk about this, Peter?
Uh, we are planning to.
Since Peter lives on Main Road, as you all know.
Forty, forty-three years now. Uh, we're planning on putting an application in for a National Register designation for Main Road, basically from one oh five up through the train trestle in Matatuck, is that correct?
Yeah, mhm, mhm.
Uh, and what that will do is bring all these tax credits available to everyone who lives on the Main Road. The real benefit here is that everyone who lives on the North Fork has a little more protection for maintaining the character that Main Road has. And we've just made some new history by, uh, by allowing some houses to be bulldozed in the most recent past. And it was, you know, for those of us who live for this, uh.
It's painful, right?
It's, yeah, it's really distressing to see them go. And to think that if we did have National Register designation for the Main Road, these houses may still be there, cause somebody may have taken advantage. Not knowing that they would have, but they could have. And that would be really, uh, helping everyone in, in the area maintaining. So we're, we're going to have to reapply and it's going to take some time because they are booked. And, you know, they're not just waiting for us to show up with our paperwork. So, uh, the, I, I think Cliff, uh, has the dates for when this is due, when the applications are due. Yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the hurdles that we had last time was that the State Historic Preservation Office wanted to include some of the farms and some of the structures into South Hole Town. And there were, I know Richard's been working very closely with the South Mark, uh, South Hole Landmarks Board trying to, uh, determine which houses may be eligible and which ones.
I've met with the South Hole, uh, they call it an Historic Preservation Board there. Uh, and I've also met with the New Matatuck Laurel Civic Association, which I know you've had a little contact with over the years, and they voted to support this too. So, um, uh, what our plan is this time is we're, we're probably gonna be putting together some kind of a steering committee to take responsibility for this. So, um, you know, Peter is working, uh, to, um, get some of his neighbors involved. And so that's our, I think the last sign was just a lot of misinformation out there.
It was mostly misinformation.
So I think that can be, that hurdle can be.
What would be a downside? What, like, what would be, what would be the, the cons, the, the cons to doing this?
We don't know. That was truly confusing to us last time.
There was misinformation given out that there would be restrictions if it was in a national district. And that if you wanted to demolish your house, you couldn't demolish your house, which couldn't be further from the truth. If you access the credits, which are available to you in a national district, then there would be restrictions as to whether or not you could demolish the house and certain things that you could do. But if you don't want to use the credits, then you can do whatever you want with your house and with your property.
You don't have to let anybody know that you're doing it. You just, you know, the town gives you approval and you go ahead.
And then what about the code we have for the addition? That you could add addition and have a business in the home? Uh, how, how does that, how does that interface with this?
Uh, that's obviously one of the incentives that, uh, back from, for the mission, that, that we've added.
You can wait till.
And it applies to Main Road only, cause it's rural corridor. And the way the National Register designation works is, okay, you preserve the main part of the building, but they encourage additions, actually. And they have certain guidelines as to how additions can be done to National Register buildings so as not to, uh, hurt the character. And you'll find lots of National Register buildings all around the country that, that, uh, have, have additions on. So that's not a problem.
I still would like to move the parking to behind the buildings.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Which didn't, it didn't happen last time. I, I still think that that's something maybe to take a look at again. So especially if you double the size of the building, that you do, you know, you keep the parking behind the homes.
Well, it happened with Preston House.
Rural character.
Yeah, you can be sure if it comes to our review, we will, we'll, we'll make sure the parking is behind.
It was, it did not address that because that was, um, it, it allowed the parking to be on the side or in, in the front.
Yeah, cause it's not a, it doesn't come to the Landmark Preservation Commission.
I, I agree with you. So I think that is.
Never have parking in the front in any historic area.
Right, so I think maybe we could just take, if you guys maybe wanna just take a look at that as you're, as you're going through this.
Good, good, good. Uh, next. Uh, and I do wanna mention the Sound Avenue Scenic and Historic Corridor. It's not technically a town-designated thing, although the town board did designate it. But it wasn't designated under any particular code, so.
So what does that mean?
For us to go from where?
That just means they set us in the historic corridor.
We call it a historic corridor, but, uh, cause we.
So it doesn't actually have any rules that apply to it. But there's a certain moral force. And so the planning board has been trying to keep buildings five hundred, you know, development five hundred feet back and preserve the character. And, and, uh, because of that designation, that was done way back in nineteen seventy-five, uh, both the town board and the state legislature.
Right? It was State Legislative Act first with Senator Laval, correct?
Uh, yes, yes.
So was that all of Sound that's in Riverhead?
The whole length of Sound Avenue is designated on the National Register from where it begins in Waiting River to where it ends in Matatuck.
Okay, good.
Or where you stand, downtown Matatuck. Um, so a lot of historic resources there. And probably someday we wanna think about putting that on the National Register for the same reasons.
Because that was the major corridor in order to get agriculture to and from the city into Riverhead. And out east is Sound Avenue. There was no twenty-five, there was no Long Island Expressway, it was Sound Avenue.
It's one of Riverhead's gems, definitely.
Yes.
Well, and as I talked about Bating Hollow Church, I was thinking, we also have the windmill that's right there.
That's not all that historic, as it turns out.
Wondered about that.
It was a.
What year is that from?
I don't know, probably nineteen forties. It wasn't, never a real windmill. Uh, next. Um, I do wanna mention just, uh, you know, obviously, one of our main jobs is, is re- reviewing projects. And so I just thought I'd show a couple of pictures, next. From one that I know is near and dear to your hearts. This was what appeared in our initial review. Uh, next.
Except it's not gonna be that color.
First we gotta change to this. And then next, and I don't think this is the very final one. But we worked really hard and the town board, uh, supported us to try to get some variation in that three hundred and fifty foot facade. So you can see the setbacks. The middle part is set into the building more. There, on the upper stories, there are setbacks, um, and some balconies up there. We just, you know, you just didn't want a three hundred and fifty foot, five-story building. Now, obviously, we agree with the town board on five-story buildings too. But, uh, but we did what we could on this and the town board helped. It's, it was really hard. It is really important that, that the town code, uh, be modified a bit to make it easier for the Landmarks Commission and the ARB to get the kind of designs that, that will really fit in the downtown.
Do you definitely see the transition from the first submission to what the final look of the buildings?
Here's another example, uh, next. Uh, this was, originally came in as Blue River Estates, next. And after a lot of, uh, alterations encouraged by the ARB and the Landmarks Commission, they were two, we worked together on downtown things. That was, um, we got something that had some variation, some variation in height, um, you know, and we think fits in much better than, than what that original one would have. Next. And, but I was here, when the commission was here last time, uh, remember this? It just come, come up, uh, next. And they wanted to turn it into this. And now we have this.
It looks better now with landscaping too.
Sure, yes. Uh, again, this is.
I'm hungry.
Not everything we wanted, but, um, uh, much better, so. And, uh, we really appreciate, uh, the town board reaching out to the Landmarks Commission and the ARB, uh, to get our expertise and input on, on what should happen there. Cause not everybody sees a nineteen sixties modern building as even worthy of preservation, but it's very characteristic of its time period. And this one is actually architecturally interesting. The idea of putting the sign inside like that and, and, uh, came from Cliff Baldwin on our commission. He actually suggested it to the, to the owners. And, and we're delighted to see that they've, um, carried that out.
Well, people should understand what great volunteer, what great members we have on the ARB and the landmarks.
We, we, we have some good members.
Yes, very good. To help us retain our, you know, our heritage and our charm that we have.
Thank you. Uh, next.
And I think they're set to be open by, uh, by Memorial Day, which will be nice.
So, uh, something that's a regular part of our agenda is we have a watch list we put together. And, um, this was the watch list, um, that we had, uh, last time we were here. So just go through and look at each one, next. Uh, this is probably the, maybe the oldest building in Riverhead, the oldest, um, house in Riverhead. Um, uh, Georgette Keller has been in contact with the bank that owns this now and we're, they're aware that it's a town landmark. And, and so we're doing what we can to see if this can get preserved. Uh, next. Um, I've talked to the owner of this one. I mean, this is the very first building on, uh, wouldn't it be great if we could use those, all those different incentives to get there? Next. Um, um, to ninety Main Road? Uh, guess it's not here anymore.
Hopefully not when they cut the road.
Okay, uh, it, it's gone, literally.
Yeah, that was, that was the White House.
It was the Good Ale House. Uh, we didn't win on that one. Um, this house, uh, on Main Road. Uh, this is the one that the Wildlife Rescue Center is proposed for, next. And I wanna urge the town board, we wanna urge the town board that whatever method of approval, um, you follow, that part of that be, that it be designated as a town landmark. And we know it is still in discussion and I don't know. There's lots of other things involved and the town board needs to consider all of that.
In speaking to them, that is their, that is their intention, but, but I certainly think solidifying that is not a bad thing.
That, that's the goal. So if, if you do it by special permit, it can be a condition of the special permit. If you decide to do it by changing the zoning, um, it could, that zoning could only apply to where it's been designated as a town landmark. Um, there's also an alternative, it could be done by variance. And again, um, there's a provision in the, uh, master plan that calls for flexibility in variances if it's designated as a town landmark. So there's three different ways it could be done. But, but I think it's important that it be designated as a town landmark, cause who knows what will happen after the Wildlife Rescue Center? Or even if it will succeed.
No, agreed.
It's a beautiful home.
It's a beautiful home and it has very interesting history. Uh, it's one of the few buildings in Riverhead that has a connection with slavery. The minister who lived there in the seventeen eighties and nineties, who was the minister in what's now Old Steeple Church, owned two slaves. And those slaves are fairly well documented. Uh, and so, so it's interesting for a lot of different perspectives, both its appearance. So, so again, uh, the Landmarks Commission, you know, urges the town board to make, uh, landmark designation requirement of any approval you may consider. Uh, next. Um, this is in South Jamesport, made no progress on, next. And this is also in South Jamesport, belongs to the county, actually, I think. And failure of payment of taxes, nothing has happened. Uh, next. Um, and then in Waiting River, um, can you say anything about this one, Stephany?
What it's, uh, what's it?
I actually knew the owner's Barbara, Irving Holtz.
Barbara Holtz.
And Barbara Holtz was one of the first female, uh, positions around here. She was a doctor.
The state owns that house.
Right, they went to my, I knew them from church.
And we've been working with them. I've sent repeated letters to, uh, the powers that be. I think, um, the Gardner Foundation may be coming up with a grant to help restore this, so, um.
It needs it.
It needs it, yeah. It's a great house.
When was this built? Do we know, Richard?
Uh, eighteen thirties, eighteen thirties.
Sorry, Stephany.
If we could magnify the landmark plaque on the front door there, they would tell us. But, uh, can't do that, next. Um, and then the last building that was on our list last time was the Sound Avenue Church. And I'm very pleased to say that I worked with a Buddhist congregation across the street, um, who has now acquired this building too.
Did they have the Grange?
Yeah, they, they bought the, I worked with them to acquire the Grange and they're, they're good preservationists. And, uh, they're, and, uh, they've also acquired this building and they're leasing it to a Baptist congregation.
Oh, very nice.
But they wanted, they wanted to protect their neighborhood. And these are both town landmarks.
I can't believe that church went for two fifty.
Right. So, next. Uh, anyway, we talked about, uh, preservation incentives. So, uh, there is, um, uh, property tax abatement, uh, that, uh, if you improve an historic structure, there's a ten-year abatement for the value of the improvements, basically. Next. We've already talked about the floor area bonus on Main Road, uh, next. Um, and flexibility in variances. Of course, designated in the National Register, get the tax credits. We've talked about that, next. Um, and often with designation, grants become available. Certainly, um, if, especially for not-for-profits, uh, they always wanna know, is it protected? Is it on the National Register? You know, whatever. Uh, next. Um, we've mentioned the walking tour, Jody talked about that, next. Um, and then finally, I do wanna just come back to downtown zoning. We, the Landmarks Commission.
No conversation goes without downtown zoning.
Really, uh, wants to support, uh, Councilwoman Kent's, uh, com- uh, committee to, um, improve the zoning downtown to make sure that this was the first proposal for the Sears site. And we just wanna make sure stuff like this can't get built. And we have. And we have a couple of things that are especially near and dear to the Landmarks Commission, next, because they protect historic buildings. And that is, we would like to make sure that as part of the rewrite, a building adjacent to an historic structure, you'd have to draw an imaginary forty-five degree line like that from its roof line up, and you couldn't build in that. So basically, there'd have to be setbacks next to, and this is particularly important, next to the Arts Council structures.
Right, and I just want to say the landmarks and the ARB have both been key to what we're working on in the downtown committee, and we're going to be presenting our recommendations, they are going to present their recommendations on May thirtieth.
Great, great, next.
So I, I just have a question, that when you, it's a historic district down there, right? But, but not every building is designated as a historic landmark.
Right.
So, so when you say if somebody's building something next to a historic structure, that structure can be taken down. So how do you, what would be judged as a historic structure that the building, you know, just what kind of criteria are you thinking that would make one a historic structure so that you have to have that compliance next to it?
Well, basically.
I like the thought, I'm just kind of curious how you would do that.
The National Register is very clear, because when you designate them, each building is determined whether it's contributing or not contributing to the district. And, and contributing buildings are ones that have to be at least fifty years old, and they have to retain a significant amount of their historic significance. You know, if the whole front facade has been totally wiped out and replaced by something else, it's no longer considered a historic structure.
But I'm saying if somebody has an application and say to take a building down, and somebody has an application for a building next to it, and, and you say the building, say the building A and B, and B is coming in before building A. We know A is coming in to be taken down, but we're, we're saying, we're conditioning building B based on the historic structure next to it. So is there, is there at any point something that, that sort of takes a building down, says, and gives it a certain amount of significance other than being in the district?
Well, what, what we do is, when, any, anything that happens to any building in the district has to be reviewed. And so the Landmarks Commission will, will determine whether we think it's historically significant enough that it shouldn't be demolished or shouldn't be changed. And we do this on a case-by-case basis.
But I mean the buildings next to it, because what you're recommending is that the, a construction in a building next to a historic building then has to meet certain requirements. So my question is, the building.
If the historic building disappears?
Thank you, so what, what does, what, what would designate this building as a, as a continuous historic building so that you could then say to the building next door, you are adjacent to a historic building? Not, I don't know that you could just do it by saying you're in the historic district.
No, you can't.
Right, so that is, are there, is, is that designation?
We do that on a case-by-case review. And, you know, we could go around and designate all of them, but things change over time, so it's better to look at it the way the building is at the time. And we did approve, for instance, the demolition of the Sears building, even though it's actually designated as contributing on the National Register. But.
And we also had, recently had Mr. Rimland come in to talk about whether or not his building on the alleyway next to the church on Main Street was a contributing building, and whether or not that building could potentially be demolished. I asked him to come in and speak with the Landmarks Preservation Commission before he put any plans forward, and I think that he found the information very helpful.
But I'm saying, like, say, say, just that particular case, so you have the church on the one side, but to the west of that. Say if you were to say that's an historic building, and that, 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 that the building in the middle would have to conform to both sides. How do you decide what designates, you know, the building to the west as having to have the, say, the Rimland building? With your suggestion, I don't need an answer now, but I'm just kind of, if you could give it some, some thought.
Well, I think it's what, what the National Register application asked for, is it contributing or is it not contributing? If it's contributing, then you meet the requirements.
And is there ratings for contributing, like, different levels of contributing?
Normally, it's yes or no.
Okay. Okay.
So if the historic building exists and somebody comes in with a development plan for the building next door, then we would like them to follow this guidelines, even if that historic structure comes down at a later date, and it actually contributes to the mission of having the wedding cake effect or.
Right, so anyway, our time is running out.
Yeah, I just, just, I was just wondering how you would do that.
Right, so the other thing, of course, we do think there need to be setbacks downtown, especially next to historic structures, next. And we also think that next to, if the historic structure is set back from the street, at least the first part of a new building next door should be set back the same distance, so it doesn't overwhelm it. Next. And I finally have one last request for the town board, and that is, the Methodist Church has suffered some damage. The people across the street have promised to repair it, best of my knowledge, they haven't. I would ask that they not be given their C of O until they've carried out their promise to repair the damage in this really significant historic structure. I mean, ceilings have come down and things like that, I don't think the damage is too extensive, but, but definitely, they should not get a C of O for the new building until they repair the damage that has been done. So, anyway, that's all that we have, certainly, if there are any other questions.
The damage there is clear.
Yeah.
Many of us went and tore it, little cracks everywhere.
Right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Questions and guidance and so forth.
Appreciate everything that you're doing, it's really impressive.
To your whole committee.
We appreciate your support. Cliff Baldwin, by the way.
Yes.
Do you want to introduce him?
Cliff, do you want to add any last minute things?
He's also a main, Main Road resident, by the way.
Okay.
Main Road resident. Business owner.
Part of that effort.
Twenty-five year business owner on Main Road.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you. All right, now we will move on to site plan, Suffolk Theater.
We'll have the Sound Sense.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sound Sense.
Greg Berman's not here yet, he's coming.
Sound Sense acoustic report, sorry. Sorry about that.
Yeah, Mr. Harkins, sitting here for a long time.
Yes.
And Bob too.
I think that, do we have a phone to?
Do we need your phone?
Yeah, we're bringing someone in too. Who are we calling?
Bonnie Schnede, who is the owner of Sound Sense, she's going to join, do you have a phone?
Okay.
Okay. I can just dial and say, morning, Bob. Bob, on this phone, do you just dial a nine to go out?
You gotta dial your code too.
I think you need the code.
Yeah.
I have it.
Okay.
Start six to two one.
It's a six four six.
Okay.
Nine.
Yeah, I think you had to dial a nine first.
So you gotta do nine first.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
Maybe you should dial.
I don't want to advertise it publicly.
No, right.
And then nine, one, and then now that I'm about six four six. And then you should be all hands, hands free.
Can these phones look like they're from eighteen sixty?
Bonnie?
I'm speaking.
Okay, there you go.
Hey, Bonnie, okay. So, my name is Sean Harkin, I'm an acoustical consultant for Sound Sense. On the phone we have Dr. Bonnie Schnede, who is the owner and founder of Sound Sense. We were brought in to perform an independent survey of the noise complaints that are originating from Stop and Shop as received in the Glenwood Village development, and.
Does everybody have a copy of the report?
I have extras.
I have a couple extras as well.
I'll have it with me right now, I'll take one. I have a copy, it's pretty thorough, it's very well done.
I have one, Bob, thank you, and I think we just.
Okay, so in order to complete the report, what we were brought in to do was to take our own set of readings independent from the readings that were completed by Stop and Shop's acoustic consultant. And we felt that it was important in order to do the analysis, not just in overall sound levels, but in third octave band sound level analysis. When you talk about sound, there's all kinds of different frequencies, it's not just the overall, how loud is the sound? How soft is the sound? It's very complex, and all these different frequencies react with structures based on how absorptive is the surface, reacts with acoustic barriers differently. Lower frequencies are going to be easier to pass through a building material and to pass over a structure. So, we felt that it was important in order to complete that type of analysis. In addition to just collecting the readings, I was on site for the duration of the readings, and we, I took a look and saw at what point different acoustic disturbances were occurring in order to take a look and project received sound levels at the Glenwood Village site as a result of any type of acoustic treatment. So with that in mind, going into the, a bit of the report, we measured a lot of different activities. There are impulsive activities that are associated.
If you could tell us the pages that you're on, yeah?
Yeah, sure. I mean, really, I'm just giving an overall review at this point, but, but page eight, if you want to go to there, that's, that's going to be some of those prevalent information.
And I believe you found that the noise was louder than what was actually given to us in the previous sound study.
So, the previous sound study was completed over a greater variety, greater duration of days, and we actually measured sound levels that were lower than those that were reported previously. So, we recorded sound levels on one of the slower days at Stop and Shop.
Next, if you go to page ten, I think it's under four one, you'll see that they pointed out that the VHB report, which is referred to on January ninth, two thousand nineteen, that on one date they had exceeded ninety-five.
Ninety-five decibels, that's correct.
And that was about thirty-five DBA louder than the highest that was reported by Sound Sense.
Okay, I got it mixed up.
Okay.
Yes, so, again, what was, what was really.
Just checking shit. Bonnie, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I wasn't, I just wasn't sure if I was working, it was getting, making some weird sounds, okay.
So, again, what was really important for us was to collect the frequency breakdown so that we understood that data. Not necessarily, the, the overall sound levels were well documented by Stop and Shop's Acoustical Consultant. So, it was really that frequency breakdown, what kinds of frequencies are prevalent in the different kinds of activities that we were most concerned with getting, which we, which we feel like we really accomplished during, during the survey.
And frequency refers to what exactly?
So.
Continuous, there's the continuous noise or?
So the frequency would be the pitch of the noise, basically, so whether it's high pitched or low pitched.
So, if I was on my story, it would be treble, mid-range bass.
Treble, mid-range bass, exactly, that, that type of a breakdown, so. So, so that's, that's really what it refers to. So we have, we have hertz, which is the scale for the frequency, which is going to show the pitch of the sound, and then we have the decibels, which is going to show the loudness, and we can talk about decibels as DBA, which would be an overall decibel rating, and then we have decibels for each frequency. So you can have sound that's louder at one frequency than another, so you have sound decibel ratings that are equated with the different frequencies of sound and then the overall. Now, the town code gives decibel ratings in the overall numbers. They give overall DBA levels that are measured with a slow response, which all that means is a one-second averaged sound level. So what's the average sound level that someone is exposed to over one second, okay? And then there's also another number, which is called the L-ten, and that's a statistical level, which just means the sound level that is exceeded ten percent of the time for the duration of the reading. Typically, that would be over an hour's period, so.
So that's kind of like constant noise?
So it would be constant noise, or if there is impulsive noise that is occurring for a large duration of the period, and the town code also, and if you, if you flip back, copy of the town noise ordinance is on, is on page four here. So the town code has allowances, actually, for impulsive sounds that you can see, if you go to section two A here, that sound levels in excess of sixty-five decibels, an L-ten in excess of sixty decibels, this is for daytime during, from eight AM to six PM. Then if you go to section C below, nope, sorry. If you go to item four below, says the sound level specified in subsections being C shall be decreased by five decibels if the sound contains impulsive tone characteristics. So, if there is banging, impulsive characteristics that are, that are there inside the sound, then we decrease the threshold because it presents the opportunity for a greater disturbance to people nearby. And it was the case that for a lot of the activities that were observed, that those types of impulsive sounds were a component of sound levels.
And that would be on page thirteen, right?
Yeah, so, on page thirteen, what we have, it's a great spot to go to at this point, so I've taken the liberty of highlighted, highlighting the, the areas in red where it would constitute a violation of the town code based on what we measured on March thirteenth. And these graphs show different activities, and the first column will show what the current measured sound level was, followed by different anticipated sound levels as a result of different levels of acoustic treatment and different solutions implemented. Whether it's a barrier at the property line with no absorption, which we'll get to the absorption in a second, a barrier at the property line with absorption, a barrier at K-Pod or the loading docks with or without absorption. Absorption is something that is very important, because it, think about if you're outside talking to somebody versus if you're indoors in a new house, right, no furniture in there, sheet rock walls and ceilings, everything gets very loud. If we talk about adding a lot of acoustic barriers, obviously, we don't have a roof, but the sound is able to bounce back and forth inside that area and become louder. So it makes the acoustic barrier have to work harder in order to stop as much sound, and degrades the efficacy of the acoustic treatment. So it is, it's very important in order to include absorption into this area so that sound levels don't become amplified. And we projected, based on the calculations that we performed, that the amplification factor could be as much as six decibels, which is significant.
What would be some of the absorption techniques they would do?
So it would, it would be something like a, like a, like a quilted blanket, or you could actually also use landscaping in order to create the absorption. Landscaping itself isn't going to be an acoustic barrier, but it will help to disperse the sound levels from, from bouncing back and forth, provide what we would call diffusion, so spreading sound out. And then it would also help to provide the absorption that we're looking for. So there's some, there's some quilted acoustic blankets, there's all kinds of perforated metal products that provide absorption and can also act as an acoustic barrier, and then there, and then landscaping.
So I just, just out of curiosity, these, these figures here, this is, this was from the day that you took the sound.
That is, correct.
So if we had had VHB's numbers in here, then, then it would be even higher.
Even greater.
Greater, okay. Would the, would the reduction, do you think, be also be great, is it equivalent with, with the higher the sound and the, the greater the reduction? Or not particularly?
No, the, the reduction level is going to stay the same, but the anticipated sound level would be greater because the sound created would be higher.
Okay.
So, that's, the reduction level would stay the same, but, exactly.
The absorption method, would you use one or the other, or you would use more than one, or?
So, I mean, preferably we would, and it does, just trying to find the exact page number. That was discussed. I think on page fourteen, it's just fourteen, it's discussed that we would preferably like to have absorption at all of the acoustic barrier locations, because all of these areas where sound is able to reflect or going to contribute. For example, what we're recommending is that acoustic barriers be implemented at the loading dock locations as well as the property line in order to protect against all of the different activities that occur at Stop and Shop's property. So if you put absorption at the property line, but not at the barriers that are at the loading dock, then you're still going to get amplification and excess reflection at the loading docks.
If you both, do as much as you can.
Exactly.
And the absorption should be as close to the noise factor as it possibly could be.
Yes, the, the acoustic barriers are most effective when they're either closest to the. when they're either closest to the source of the noise or closest to the receiver of the noise.
And what about the, the canopy that you're talking about?
So, we did talk about a canopy. I mean, obviously, as you can see in the, in the tables in the report, even the data that we collected, that is not as high as some of the different activities that VHB measured. Could still be, and may very well be in violation of the town code. So, I mean, we're already talking about a fifteen-foot barrier in some of these locations. So, really, we're starting to reach a point of diminishing returns. In order to really reduce noise further than that, we'd be talking about putting some kind of canopy or.
Return, enclose again.
Or return to, to enclose some of the area.
And what, what kind of significance would that have in reducing the noise? Is, is it minimal, or is it?
It's signi- it's significant.
It's significant.
It's significant. I mean, especially if we start talking about the construction of the canopy return area in order to enclose some of this, a- as well as the barrier. It can have, it can have a very significant impact. And if that's something that's being considered seriously, then we can certainly take a look at the, at the simulations again.
And you would also look at the engineered plans for any type of acoustic barrier that might be submitted to the town to verify that that plan would effectuate the reduction in the noise.
Exactly. So as, as your consultant, we would recommend that any plan that comes. Any alternative plan, or any, really, any plan that's going to be implemented that comes to you all, be submitted to us so that we can review it to make sure that all of the materials are gonna meet the technical specifications that we're looking for, as well as meet the criteria that we're looking for as far as sound reduction to the neighboring properties.
So, I just wanna get this straight. If, if this were to be used, where you use the, the current from yours, if you did that and then extrapolated out the information, even with these absorptions added, where you remain under the DBA, would these then be over the D, our code?
No, anything in white is under the code.
No, but this is your numbers. If you use VHB's numbers here?
Yes.
Would these still be over our code?
I mean, they, they would be over, they would be over the code. I mean, VHB measured as high as, as high as ninety-five decibels, that was.
So you're not getting under our code with, with, with this?
No.
Not without a canopy, not without a canopy or a return wall?
Yeah, we are.
Depends on the vehicles also. I mean, if you have a truck or trailer that has the exhaust pipes coming out the top of the roof, then that's why you need the fifteen-foot height and the canopy. If they weren't bringing those type of trucks back there, and it was just the exhaust out of the bottom of the truck, or the backup noise that was coming out of a lower truck, it's just anything that is at the same height or higher than an acoustic area.
Yeah, so that is, that is certainly gonna have an impact. There were other activities like the bang that is associated with the unloading that are, that are already at the level that they're going to remain no matter what. So, yeah, certainly roof-mounted exhaust, if you have a roof-mounted exhaust that's ten, twelve feet in the air, obviously, you're gonna have a higher level of, oh, sorry, excuse me, a lower level of acoustic reduction than you are with a source that's at the ground. Because it has higher to go, it has less restrictions to go over the fence, right? But, but.
These aren't the trucks, though, right?
Some of, some of these sound sources are, are trucks, so there are some that are idling trucks and, and things like that that were considered, and.
Air brakes and.
Air brakes and things like that. But some of the other activities are unloading activities, which can. Backing up, that can, that can have high sound levels and.
Well, I think that's the major complaint from there, isn't it?
The, the freight activities and the loading and unloading. And those were, on page, on page thirteen, we have some of, some of those activities banging at the loading dock.
Right, like, okay, say banging at the loading dock here, right? So you have eighty-two here. And that was lower than VHB's, or no, do you know?
I mean, VHB doesn't present the data in the same way. That they, they didn't give what the sound pressure levels were of specific activities. We have the overall data. Based on what I observed there, I would anticipate that the ninety-five decibels may have been a bang. It was certainly the loudest activities that we measured. So I would anticipate that that could be the same, but I don't have their data, it may not.
And that was right at the loading dock, 'cause then if you go to the next column, it's seventy-two at the property line.
So, Mike, Mike.
That, those were measured at the property line. It was just different, different bangs that were measured. So, they weren't all equal.
Was Stop &amp; Shop given notice of you doing this? Or were they aware that you were doing this the day that you were there?
No, I mean.
They were given notice?
Theoretically, no.
Well, we, we may have been seen, but we worked with Mr. Kozakovich directly.
We, we, we did not give them a heads up that we were going out.
But, I think that on our discussions and the resolution being adopted to hire SoundSense, that the owner of Glenwood and the developer for Stop &amp; Shop knew that we were going to be doing a noise study. So they were both aware of the fact that a noise study was being done.
But not exactly when.
Right.
Right, yeah. So they couldn't persuade trucks not to show up that day?
Absolutely.
This would be inaccurate.
Yeah, the reason.
Well, they did.
Because there is no barrier right now between Stop &amp; Shop and the homes.
The reason that we selected the day that we did was that we wanted to be completely impartial and not have outside influence of anything else. When you have wind effects and you have trees rustling, it, it can increase the sound levels that we measure, right? So, this eighty-two decibels may have, because of a nearby tree, gone up to eighty-six decibels, or, or something like that. And we wanted, and the conditions on the day that we measured were extremely calm. So we wanted to have pure acoustic signatures, free from outside influence of the activity.
So you had taken a look at, at what was proposed for Stop &amp; Shop? And compared it?
Yes.
And what, what is, what have you come to the conclusion on that? The difference between?
I mean, one of the large differences is that we feel that some kind of absorption needs to be integrated into the solution set, that's something that we feel very strongly about. If there are going to be vehicles that do have roof-mounted exhausts, we feel especially strongly that the height of the barrier should be increased to the fifteen feet. I mean, we feel that the height of the barrier should be increased to fifteen feet for all the activities because, a- as you can see in the report, there are still projected violations of the code, even with the fifteen-foot barrier, let alone a little bit of an acoustic degradation of the twelve foot.
Yeah, okay.
Wow, you guys, uh, well, I never thought there was much science involved with sound.
It's, it's all a science.
Good job, Sean. Yes.
So, are there any other questions? I, the report is thorough, there's a lot of information in there. If there are questions moving forward, we're happy to field them.
Thank you, I appreciate the work you did.
And in speaking with the property owner prior to hiring SoundSense, I think that the goal is to mitigate and trying to eliminate some of the noise, realizing that all of the noise cannot be reduced.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's an important distinction. What we're talking about here are significant reductions. When you talk about reducing sound by ten decibels, that's what people would typically identify as about having the perceived sound. So we are talking about significant reductions for all of these solution sets. Is it to what the, what the town has deemed, not, not in all cases, right? And not in some of the extreme cases where you would have very high sound levels. But we are talking about significant reductions.
And different sound. Because if you have the acoustic barrier, then the sound is not going to be as loud, or it's going to recreate the sound. Because it's, it's not going to be that banging that has the ting after it.
Yeah, it is gonna have a, a little bit of a different quality of the sound, just based on.
Be a third sort of a rap.
Easy breakdown of the reduction.
Is there, is there any reduction in sta- sound based on, on volume at one time? Is there, is there, changing, changing the?
Of the reduction?
Yeah. Is there any way to reduce some of this also by just changing the methodology of, of how they unload or the number of trucks that are idling there at one time?
Yeah, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't reduce the reduction. The reduction is, is set based, based on the solution. But it would reduce the sound levels created.
Okay.
So, if there were restrictions as far as how many trucks can be in there at one time, it would reduce the creation of the sound level in the first place.
And then would that allow the absorption to reduce it, or it would just, it would just?
It would, yeah, it would be reduced to the same degree.
For per, for each incident, but it would be maybe less overall occurring at the same time?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think that in look, in reading and looking at the direction of supermarkets and these delivery type of services and supermarkets that are being built, I know Amazon and Whole Foods is working on a click-and-collect instead of a delivery service, just because of the expense of the trucks and the insurance and the drivers and delivering, where it's going to move into the, you order your groceries online and then you pull up in front of the store and somebody runs them out to you, rather than paying the expense of the delivery trucks and the drivers and the insurances and everything else. So, that's the model going forward. I don't know how soon this store would be implementing that, or if.
No, they do that, peapod does that.
Yeah.
That's how I do it.
So, that's, that's.
I pick up my own, no one's gonna find my house.
That's the way of the future, as far as the convenience of grocery shopping. But until then.
But they still get the deliveries of their groceries, 'cause this is the actual delivery to then do that service, so.
It's a model that's changing, and we've already seen it with Amazon and Whole Foods. So, it's, it's something that may not be a problem forever, but we should address it to the best extent that we can, for now.
Sure, yeah.
It's just.
All right.
No, you don't have to do the delivery. No, it's, it's still convenient.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely, and I think as we started this work session off with the advisory committee for the senior citizens, I think a lot of that is, that's why I mean, it's kind of ironic, actually.
But, but as I said, the, the food still has to be delivered there. This is the delivery portion of it, it's not, it's not the.
I think it's the peapod is making most of the noise, though.
This is the delivery.
That's when they started complaining, was when the peapod came. Before the peapod came, they weren't, they weren't really complaining. It's when the peapod came, when they started to complain.
Absolutely. It's busy. I see the trucks all there.
I tell them gift cards, man. I mean, I know that the complaining were the, the complaints that town received were in two thousand thirteen, I think it's probably when they started, but I, I know from the site plan approvals, they received approval for peapod, right, at the outset. Because we know that the original approval was given to Stop &amp; Shop.
From the beginning.
I think it was four separate resolutions, if I recall.
Yes.
The last two actually addressed peapod as part of that amended site plan approval, so. It was, it was part of the approval, yeah. But I just, you know, I don't know when the peapod operation started to become a larger part of their operation there.
Sean, excellent job.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Good job.
So.
Thank you for all your input there, Doc.
So, all right, so we have, we have the report now. We've shared the report with Stop &amp; Shop.
Stop &amp; Shop has been given a copy, and counsel for Glenwood has been given a copy, which.
Who is counsel of Glenwood?
Keith Archer.
So we can reach out to Stop &amp; Shop and, and follow up with, with them?
I, I don't know if anybody from here is here today.
I think that they're working on a revised plan to submit, an alternative plan to submit. And, you know, I think they're asking for a material cost, purchasing from your company for the materials, for the acoustic materials also.
Sure, yes, and that, yeah, and that's a, and that's a point. I mean, we specify all kinds of things and all the technical specifications are in there, but any alternates to any of the materials, just.
Yeah, I mean, that is consistent with what I understand from the Stop &amp; Shop representative who couldn't be here today. He was committed in Massachusetts. But they are looking at what was provided to them from SoundSense. They're looking at the cost factor, because obviously you have a fifteen-foot high, oh, barrier as opposed to twelve.
Which would require steel beams, H, H-beams, I-beams.
And I think also some discussion about possibly soundproofing or putting some kind of a, a sound absorption on the walls of the house, so.
So are they submitting that back to planning, then?
Yes.
I think they're gonna be reaching out first to get some of the costs from SoundSense, as well as, I think, from, you know, competitive companies.
Then they're going to be engineering a plan, and then they would submit it back to planning, and then, or whoever you'd like them to submit it to. And then, I think it's a great idea to submit it, again, to SoundSense so that they can review it and make any recommendations, or.
That would be our recommended course.
I think, I think that, that it should go through our attorney, because we've been in touch with Stop &amp; Shop over there. So I think for Bob, for you to reach out to Stop &amp; Shop and sort of be the go-between for, for what Stop &amp; Shop is proposing.
I'll, I'll take the information in, no problem, I've been in.
Yeah, you've been in contact with them.
Communication with them, so it's not a problem.
Good idea.
Bonnie, do you have anything that you feel like would be important to add, or?
I do, and actually, Sean, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So Sean did a great job, and I prefer he made the presentation because he did an incredible job, making certain that we knew exactly what the nature of the noise was. He took great care in this. And the only thing that I wanna add is, is that when I started my company back in the eighties, I only did consulting, and I had come from a world of DARPA and DoD. I knew I was very good. People would say, oh, this just isn't working. I go, mm, you know what, it's not an art, it's a science. Which I'm very glad to hear that Sean repeated that when he was making the presentation. So I went out in the field, and originally I was called South Fork Technological Consultants, and I realized people either swapped out materials or didn't install it properly. So I worked very hard to come up with, which is what's called the SoundSense system. And when we give a specification, even though it's a SoundSense product, it's because we're trying to make certain that we maintain control, not of the product, that we sell our product, but that what is installed meets proper specifications. And I just wanna reiterate what Sean said, and that is, the SoundSense system means that we must review whatever it is that they are using that is not our product. Because there are people out there that say, oh, yeah, this is just like it. But the truth of the matter is, when we look deep into the specifications, it will not provide the same level of acoustic attenuation, absorption, transmission loss, or whatever it is. So there's purpose in this, and it is really the SoundSense way to make certain that this works. And so it's not so much that we make the sale on the material, it's that what is important is that we maintain the integrity of the engineering. So, that's the only thing I was gonna add, like, what is the SoundSense system? It's making certain that it really works. And as a member of the community, we care deeply that everyone is satisfied. And if it's a matter of financial implication, then we will make certain that if someone can get something for less, that they're actually buying the right material. So that's the only thing I wanted to add in there. But other than that, I agree, Sean did a great job. I'm like going, yeah, that's fantastic, that's exactly what I would have done, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bonnie, I appreciate all of that, and Sean did do a wonderful job, and it was very easy to grasp what, what is going on here. But that being said, I would prefer that it goes through, through our town attorney and our planning department. They've been working with Stop &amp; Shop, so they've delivered them the report as Stop &amp; Shop comes back to go back through our planning and attorney, and then back through SoundSense. I think it's the more appropriate way to move forward with the project.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, we just wanna make sure it works.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much now.
Sean, thank you. Good job.
Sounds like today would be the day to ask for a raise.
I don't think she's hung up yet.
She's odd.
Call it back and let her know. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, nice seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to say that Sean.
Sean had really great teaching. I add Sean. Sean was my second grade student.
Yeah, Sean's a Riverhead graduate.
Riley, he's a Riley grad. He just got engaged this weekend, yeah.
And now we're moving on to site plan for Suffolk Theater, so welcome, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you, Vic.
Thank you.
Is this the same one you sent us?
No.
Oh, no, this is something different, okay.
Yeah, what I did is I just kinda paired it. I sit next to Jeff, so I can kick him under the table.
All right, welcome. Once again, we're on film, so we're just gonna have everybody introduce themselves on going live. So just to introduce yourself for the folks watching.
Hey, Greg, do you have copies?
Yeah, I gave them.
No, for us. Bob Costelvi, Suffolk Theater.
Okay, so you're the applicant for the project?
Yes.
Okay.
Vic Pershanowski for the Suffolk Theater consultant.
Hi, Victor, and Greg.
All right, so, what we've got, that's Rick Stott, our architect.
Okay.
Who's preparing our PowerPoint as needed.
Do you wanna start with the power, with the PowerPoint?
It's up, it's up to Greg.
Greg, how would you like?
I, I mean, we can just present it while he's getting ready, we can kind of just, kinda get an overview of what we're proposing here. So what I distributed to you, I've got my staff report. I also distributed a short two-page memo, just capturing some of the bullet points on some of the larger issues with the application. I also distributed a short two-page memo just capturing some of the bullet points on some of the larger issues with the application.
Okay.
And I've attached also a, just an image that I've captured showing the property and the easement area in a higher resolution.
Okay, thank you. Which one are you starting with? The staff rep?
Well, I'll just go, I'll go through the memo because it sort of captures all the bullet points.
Okay.
And before Greg starts, just supervise so you know that we've had a copy of this for some time and we've already addressed a lot of these issues which we'll, as we go through here today.
Okay, all right, well.
Um, so off the bat, uh, what the applicant is proposing is in addition to the rear portion of the Suffolk Theater, it's gonna be on the northern side, um, adjacent to the town-owned parking lot. They're proposing a five-story addition to the building. Contained within that addition, there will be a expansion of the theater, including green rooms, dressing room, like a kitchen area for the operation of the theater, as well as proposing in its current iteration, three, approximately three thousand square feet of retail and twenty-eight apartments, uh, combination of studio one-one bedroom apartments on the second through fifth floor. The application is a, considered a type one action pursuant to secret and for the town code environmental review quality. Mandatory coordinator review amongst involved agencies will be required. The applicant has just submitted, on Monday, they submitted a full EIF form, which I have yet to been able to review. Once we review that, uh, planning board, planning department's gonna recommend that the town board circulate a request to assume lead agency for the project. Uh, determination of significance is withheld pending additional review of the submitted information. In its current form, the application will require a special permit from the town board because the building is exceeding the eighty percent maximum lot coverage permitted in the DC one zoning district. Now, I believe the applicant, in conversations, they have.
Reduced the scope of the project, yes.
Once we, once we, you know, the, the, the scope of the review will change once I, you know, review these new plans that they're gonna be submitting. In terms of the use.
I'm sorry, so it was reduced to the eighty percent lot coverage, just that below the eighty percent?
Yes, yeah, we were definitely below the eighty percent.
And yeah, I, I haven't seen that, so I can't really comment on anything aside from.
Right, what we did supervise, I verbally with, and you'll show it on the PowerPoint, we took some of the issues and we've addressed them and by pending, putting it in a formal resubmission, we wanted to have this meeting first because there's gonna, things that are gonna change from this meeting, so.
Okay.
So in terms of the intensity of use, uh, the proposed mixed use of the building, including the expansion, the new retail and the twenty-eight apartments does seem to be a little bit excessive, given the size of the parcel and the potential impacts to the parking district. Now, while the subject parcel is located within the town of Riverhead Parking District and they are not required by code to provide parking, the aggregate of the uses would require seventy-one stalls if it were located outside the parking district. In its current submission form, uh, they're providing three handicap parking stalls, so.
And just Greg, on that, what is the schedule use for that? That's one point five for the?
Uh, yeah, I believe it's one point five parking spaces for apartment unit. I believe it's one per two hundred and fifty square feet for the retail use. And I do not know the number for the assorted uses off the top of my head for the expansion of the theater.
And do you know which, what, what, of the seventy-one, what would be retail and what would be apartment?
Um, so I mean, it's about three thousand square foot of retail divided by two fifty, so I mean.
Okay.
Greg, can you back up a little bit? You said they would be required to do seventy-one spots?
Well, yeah, so if, if, if this was any site outside of the parking district, if the applicant was required to provide onsite parking, those total stalls would amount to seventy-one required for the proposed uses.
But what they're putting in are three handicap?
Correct. Correct. So I mean, so, uh, that, that will.
And that's all that's planned?
That, that's all that's planned. Um, now again, in its current submission form, a portion of the entranceway to the building and the stairs and ramps was going to be located in a town-owned easement area, which was granted to the Suffolk Theater. I believe this was done in two thousand six. Now, in its current form, the, where the building is located and where these ramps are gonna be located would have required the reconfiguration of the town-owned parking lot. So in addition to the seventy-one stalls that they were not providing, it was gonna require the elimination of, I did a rough estimate of maybe up to a dozen stalls within the town-owned parking lot just to reconfigure traffic flows for safe circulation within the town parking lot. So it's not just a, it's not just that they're not providing, yeah, it's just not that not, they're not providing the parking.
We're losing parking.
They're also removing parking, which, you know, it, it's something that will go along with the parking study that's being conducted, but.
Okay.
That, that was a significant impact that I had identified.
The parking that they're taking away is on their property, right? Some of it?
Well, it's, it's within.
Said it was town.
Yeah, it's, it's in the town, it's on the town parking lot. They do have an easement area over it, but even outside of that easement area.
But this, this aerial shows like the red, the property that they own, and the green is the easement area, right?
Correct. Now, but where, where it would come into play is that this line is the proposed ramps and stairs.
Mm-hmm.
These parking spaces within the easement area would be eliminated as well as these parking spaces which are outside the easement area because you wouldn't have people butting right up to the building.
Right, to back up and turn around and pull out.
It would require, it would require some analysis and reconfiguration of the parking lot outside that easement area.
And that easement is a perpetual easement that was issued in two thousand six, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We have, we've addressed that, but we'll go on with your report and then we'll.
Yeah, I got it. Community character, uh, when you look at the building now, on page six of my main staff report, I've got some pictures that I took from the town parking lot, looking at the surrounding buildings. What the applicant is proposing in this current submission is what I consider a very modern-looking building, a lot of glass.
Can you just orient us to, to the, to this building? I can't figure out what is what.
We, this elevation right here, you would be, if you're in the town parking lot, this would be the northern side of the building.
Okay.
Suffolk, Suffolk Theater would be beyond here. This would be.
So Suffolk Theater is this?
Suffolk Theater would be back here.
The alleyway is right here.
Where's name, Main Street's up this way?
Correct.
Okay.
The alleyway is right here alongside the theater.
Okay.
These handicap parking spaces would be located in the easement area.
This is going up and creating a new alleyway to the theater?
Uh, the alleyway would actually be around.
Around, okay, so this is an alleyway straight to the theater. It's not a walkway to the theater.
This would just be stairwell access to the proposed retail usage. Uh, there is a, a little elevator to get people up from street level up to this level.
What page did you say to go to on Saturday?
Uh, so on page six, I just took a couple of pictures of the surrounding buildings. What the applicant's proposing, very modern, a lot of glass, a lot of aluminum trim. And when you look at the character of the surrounding buildings, you've got a lot of, you know, red brick buildings, um, church there, which is, you know, sided with, you know, painted cedar shake. It just seems to be in, you know, stark contrast with what's around that area.
Which is what Landmarks likes, but I don't think that it's, this is set in, I mean, this is just a conceptual drawing or rendering.
Again, we have, we've addressed it.
We're gonna clarify all that.
We've, we, this was our initial application and pen, and we got Greg's review letter and we've been working on it for the last two or three months to, but let him give his report because that was our initial application and then we have to respond to it as an answer.
Have, have you been to ARB and Landmarks yet?
Not yet.
I did.
We've spoken to.
We wanted the town board to get a, get a bite at the applicant.
Sure. So I don't know that we wanna like highlight like the modern building and things like that because it hasn't gone through the process yet.
So Greg, I just, this is where I'm getting, so this building is, it's this red area here where it's going, is that?
More or less, correct.
Okay, so it's.
Those ju, those just show the property lines. So this is the parcel owned by the Suffolk Theater.
What is this? What is that one there?
The building next to it.
Okay.
That's the lawyer.
The lawyer, okay, the law firm, okay.
Essex and Angel, and you've got the church further to the west. So this is the property line of the, of the Suffolk Theater, the area here, that's the easement area.
Okay, so how far back is this from Main Street?
Hundred and fifty feet.
Hundred and fifty feet, okay.
You know, one of the pending ARB and Landmarks preservation view on whatever the, uh, whatever the character of the building that they are gonna propose, they will need to provide some color renderings. Uh, I would recommend that they provide some sort of renderings as the building that would be viewed from Main Street, from the parking lot, from different areas around town so that we can accurately assess its visual impacts to the area. Now, the easement area itself, this area, this easement area was granted, but there has been a question that was raised of whether or not the easement would allow the applicant to construct an entrance to a residential and retail complex. There was some verbiage in the easement agreement which spoke about furtherance of the theater operation, you know, entrances to a performing arts center, fountains, landscaping plantings. So that, so there is some question as to whether or not the easement would allow them to locate the stairs and the ramps within that area. As I said, the construction in its current state would require reconfiguration.
Wait, why is there a question? Just 'cause we haven't gotten to that or we haven't gotten all the information on that yet?
I think that would be a question for our attorneys.
I've been asked to render an opinion and I haven't been able to get into it yet, but.
Well, I have the actual language here and it says, "For the purpose of enabling the grantor, the P, uh, this, the PAC and its commercial residential space at its premises, specifically allowing to grantee to erect a pedestrian ramp to provide for handicap and pedestrian access to the PAC for the placement of the necessary blah, 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 blah."
So PAC is the Performing Arts Center, correct, for access to the Performing Arts Center?
Actually, this expansion to this, a little history has, has always, even when the town thought we were gonna do this building, phase two, phase one was get the building up running, renovate it, restore it, which Bob and his wife did.
Had a beautiful job.
And now phase two, phase two is, has always been to expand the, uh, the stage area and the, the support space we need to make it a full performing arts council, uh, center. The, and it's commercial, it's not gonna be retail, it's commercial use that we're, we're doing. I just, some of the things that he'll do in his presentation. The purpose of the, the, which is allowed by zoning, the commercial space and the residential is to stabilize the finances of the building, of the Performing Arts Center. Right now, it's very tough to break even with the point, which Bob will address in a few minutes, but it's the purpose of the residential, uh, studios is a couple of things here. One is to, on the commercial space, we're gonna try to market it as a artist workshops, which was always a dream of Main Street, Riverhead. And the residential component is to stabilize the income to the building. So even in future owners, that there'll be a, a financial model here that'll always support and continue the operation of the Performing Arts Center. That's where we are.
But is it? I think, but just a, just a second. Vic, I think you're, you're, you're making a case for how the easement can be used. I think the question was, have we had our, our, our staff and our town attorney give us, render us an opinion on?
Right.
Let me finish one second.
Yeah, we re-scale back.
On, on how the easement was drafted, so we are waiting for that from Mr. Kavakav.
Yeah, yeah, we're fine. We're only in a preliminary discussion here.
Uh, just, just to be clear on what, what we're at.
Sure, no, I, we have no problem with that.
And, and honestly, I, I have to question why staff is finding out stuff now. I mean, is it normal for you to find out stuff at the work session? Shouldn't you have had this ahead of time so that you could review it? It, it seems premature that we're at this point when so much is incomplete here in the report that you've had an opportunity to review.
Well, this app, I mean, this application was submitted a long time ago. My staff report was finished, I believe, at the end of February.
When was it submitted? Can he finish?
I distributed it at the end of February. I believe it was February twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, around that time.
The application, when was it submitted to the town?
Seventeen, December of two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't think it's.
What I don't understand is that so much is incomplete and then you're saying, oh, but we took care of that.
Well, we didn't.
But then how come our staff hasn't, he only received it on Monday. I don't really understand why we're here if you have not had the proper time to review this.
Well, the way the site plan has worked, since I've been in the town of Riverhead, sat on the town board, we submitted a, an application.
I just want Greg to finish.
Can we just, I think Catherine asked a question to Greg.
I was gonna answer.
I know, but I'm asking Greg, sorry.
Okay, okay.
It's not, it's not out of order.
We received the application. I reviewed what we had submitted. I had given, given my letter to the applicant to submit the additional information. It's coming before the board now because instead of having them do a full resubmission, redesign the building, we want, you know, I thought it was appropriate to present it to the town board, let you guys get a flavor for it, understand the scope of what they're proposing and maybe provide some feedback to, you know, instead of having several revision sessions and coming back and reviewing, we can get some of the larger issues out of the way, identify them, and then let the applicant move forward and just sort of make the process more efficient instead of doing several reviews, several resubmissions, you know, more staff time.
Totally agree.
Do you feel that this, what, doing it in this, in this manner would help to streamline a little bit?
Yeah, I, I believe we.
Absolutely.
The, the submission of the full EIF, I, I don't wanna say it's, we're, we're not gonna get anything from it, but in the submission of the site plan application, we can identify some of the issues right off the bat. Uh, the full EIF is required before we can initiate the secret coordination process.
Right.
Uh, but I believe in its submission status, the board can ascertain a lot of the critical issues before they go through costly revision processes. You know, you can understand the scope of it and, you know, the best steps we can recommend to the applicant to move forward.
And, and I guess the point that.
That's how we're proceeding.
And I guess the point that Catherine is making is, is that you, since you do, did know you were going to be on work session today and you have, you know, Greg has written out his report, that it would have been nicer to have the information prior to having him come here so he could present the information that you were gonna be presenting. I think that's.
I mean, even to just get it on Monday. You've got something on Monday.
We just, we, we.
Well, I received a full EIF.
That was just, we had to redo the long form, which we, we put a, there was a long form that was filed in December of two thousand seventeen, which changed because the app, because when we finally put the, the revised application in, we had to redo the long form. We, we did the short form. He called me, said we need the long form. That's why we did the long form. This is the beginning of the process. So all we did was we took Greg's report, which you have a copy of, and we started working on it. That's all. And I said to Greg, what do you want us to do here? Do you want us to resubmit the paper? He said, no, let's go to the work session, have a discussion, and then before we start doing that, that's why we're here today, talk about it.
Which is, which is.
I think it's the way I.
I think it's the way to go.
No, but I think it's the way.
I can't imagine anything else been done that way. Nothing new.
This is the very beginning of the.
The bottom line, I, I think there's enough substance in the current application where the board can really understand what's going on with the project, identify some of the issues and then give some guidance to the applicant so that they can address.
I mean, we're a year away from getting anything done here, so.
Okay, so, so, so go ahead, Greg. Well, let's continue.
So we'll just continue on, um, moving on from the easement area. As I said, the reconfiguration of the parking lot is something that the applicant is going to need to address. During the construction phase, I mean, it's, you know, we're, we're not to that point yet, but, uh, potential vibration impacts as we've seen with construction of other large buildings on, you know, in the downtown area. The applicant would need to address vibration impacts and how they'll be mitigated.
We're not gonna do that.
No piles.
No piles.
There's been no indic.
No piles.
There's been no indication so far in the application as to whether or not the proposed apartments will be affordable or market rate. That's something important that the applicant will need to address.
Have you made any determination on that?
Market.
Market. Good, 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 good.
I live above the theater.
Good, I can walk the church. Walk out the door right in.
There's also in some of these sketches that have been submitted, uh, it looks like the, there is a railing around the roof, which would sort of indicate to me that there may be some sort of roof occupancy.
Nice.
Now, while I'm not opposed to that, if the roof doesn't tend to be occupied, that needs to be included in floor area ratio. And there's also the question of whether or not that would be considered an additional story.
And my other question is it, is it for, is it being, is the thought to construct it for the theater, for catering, for holding events on the roof, weddings, things like that? The roof?
The.
Is it, is it used, going to be used as a commercial roof for renting or will it be used by tenants? Tenants only?
We'll explain.
Okay, just, okay.
There were some impacts to the town-owned parking lot. Uh, I did reach out to the engineering department on page eight of my staff report. They actually had a utility map for the first street parking area. There are some existing stormwater drainage structures as well as some parking light, uh, parking lot lighting and electrical utilities that are underground. So any impacts to those areas will need to be addressed by the applicant. They may need to, uh, reconfigure the stormwater, reconfigure the lighting in the parking lot, uh, but that's something that the applicant will need to address. I, I mean, those are, those are the main impacts. I, I think the biggest impact for this one is the parking and the, you know, the removal that would be required of additional parking is one of the most significant impacts in addition to the character of the building and the character of the area.
I just have a question. For, the, the grade, grade at, at is higher on Main Road than in the back?
I believe it is. There was a comment. I know Mr. Hammond, before he left, he did provide some comments. Uh, there was something in there about establishing a grade plane.
Cause I'm just kinda curious, how tall this building is in the back? Because if, if grade is here and you got, you got what, a bunch of steps here?
The grade is higher in the back than in the front.
The problem is, is that the, the rake in the theater slopes down, which puts the stage approximately seven feet below grade. So when you put the support area and you put the stage, the extended stage, that area is gonna be popping out of the ground about five and a half, about five, five and a half feet.
So this.
I'm gonna explain all that very clearly in the presentation. I'm gonna explain all that very clearly in the presentation.
Rick will explain it, but there's, there's, there's reason, right.
Yeah, so I was just wondering how tall it's in the back, so it's like sixty seven, over sixty seven?
No, it's under sixty feet.
Under, oh, because the grade goes down there, okay.
Correct.
All right.
And that's something that'll be addressed in the visual impact, you know, I mean, it's very possible that from Main Street, you know, if you're on the side of the Suffolk Theater, on the north side, you may not even see it, just based on the existing building and the visual plane.
And it's based on average grade?
Church is short on that, correct.
Um, I mean, I pretty much recapped all the things, I, I think if the applicant would like to kind of address some of the issues.
Yes, I'm gonna hand out this, uh, this, just pass this down and.
Just one for here, Vic.
Yeah. What you're getting is a copy of the, um, of the PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, but this is?
Yeah, that's just.
Copy of the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I don't wanna look at it yet, I like.
You can keep it.
I'll keep it, I like looking at it pretty much.
Yeah, oh, you didn't get one? Oh, yeah.
You guys take a look.
Alright, so what Rick is gonna do is, he's gonna give our little PowerPoint, a little history of where we are. Also, he's going to address some of the issues that were raised, um, in, in Greg's review letter. And of course, this is just a prelim, preliminary step, so that's, everything is open for discussion and negotiation and blah, blah, blah.
Greg, here's one for you.
Thank you.
So can I just ask a question? So if you, are you increasingly need stage to be able to do other kinds of theater?
Yes.
Stage is going back about twenty-two feet.
So you'll be able to, uh, offer, offer?
So the, the, the purpose of doing that is we, we'll be able to do plays, we'll be able to do operas.
Performing Arts Center.
We'll be able to bring in a thirty-piece orchestra. Uh, it allows us to do.
More of a functioning theater.
More, right now, right now, we're operating two days a week, which is a big problem. Any business, there's no business in the world that makes money being open two days a week. When you gas, you're electric, the refrigerators, the ice makers, taxes, insurance, it's going. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Doesn't matter if you're open for an hour or you're open seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. The whole trick to this is to extend the stage and be able to do a number of different things and be able to do a play that can run for two weeks or three weeks. Be able to offer more and different than everybody else's.
Actually transform it into a full-fledged performing arts center.
Right.
Which was always the dream.
What, what, what we, what we built was a, a, a great theater, and it's working. What we're proposing to do is to build a spectacular performing arts building.
Now, I know a lot of the local theater groups haven't been able to perform there because of stage.
Because.
Because the stage is not picking up, there's nowhere to.
The stage, you know, what, 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 what Dan has done and what we've done is, uh, nothing short of a miracle.
Yeah.
I mean, we had opening night, we had, uh, Vince Giordano and the Nighthawks, we had eighteen-piece orchestra up there. You know, that's.
Very close.
That's about it, you know? Not to mention, you know, we, we, we have a very, you know, the green room's extremely limited. By doing this, we'll have, um, I'm taking a guess, approximately three and a half thousand square feet of, uh, of, of, of dressing room, wardrobe.
Support touring room for the performing arts center.
Uh, carpentry shop, storage, which, which we don't, we have zero storage right now.
And I believe it can, it impacts the acts that will come or won't come.
Right.
If you don't, cause they require, cause they're artists or whatever, they require certain things, like with the green room and facilities, and if you don't have it, they're not gonna come.
Yeah, they're, they're, uh, very picky, not, very picky.
Yeah, yeah. So that's why.
They are very, you know, very particular.
That's why this follows suit where.
Absolutely.
Stage one was to get the building operating, and by the way, this was a full restoration. This wasn't a fake restoration. Bob and his wife spent the money, the millions, it's a full restoration, cause I, as you, people know in the town, I started with the Suffolk Theater in the nineties, okay? Me, Mr. Pike, and a whole bunch of other people, Rob Pike, and, and he faithfully restored it. The water fountains there, as you, everybody knows, you've been in there, and it's always phase two. So now, phase two is the support system we need, plus the financial stability to keep the project going forever. Hopefully, as long as you can.
But, and speaking with you in the past, this was anticipated when you purchased the building.
Oh, yeah, the intent.
I mean, because otherwise you would've never requested the easement, which was beyond your property.
The intent was always to, uh, and I don't wanna dig, dig up old, uh, old history, but the intent was to always put this building up in the back. Uh, a situation arose and, uh, you know, we, we got, spent time doing much of nothing for a couple of years.
Right.
Um, but.
But the initial.
The vision is, was always to put this extension on and make it what it should be. And, and, and what Vic was saying is, I, I, I might be wrong, but I think I'm right. We've won just about every single award for historical restoration in New York State and citation.
And we're registered too, right, Bob?
That you could get, yes.
We're registered.
It's on the national register.
We're in the national register.
You know, we, we, we wanna make sure that this, uh, this was the theater for eighty-five years. Uh, we'd like to, I'm not gonna see it, but it'd be nice to think it'll be here for at least another eighty-five years.
But I'm just saying, for the, for the easement, I mean, the original projection and the original.
Was to make.
The original vision was to bump out the stage, to provide the, you know, to make the green room bigger, which is why you needed that easement area, which goes beyond your property, which nothing is built in now, just so that you could access it.
Exactly, because there's a difference in, in the, in the elevation height of where the first floor is gonna be in the transition to make it from the, what, what was First Street to, to the theater.
And the other thing I just wanna point out, since we're on television, is that this, cause a lot of people tell me that it's tax-free. This pro, this property, since Bob and his wife bought it, they pay property taxes, they're on the tax rolls, this is not tax exempt. It's, they get a tax bill every year, and it's, uh, part of, it's a been, this and the Hyatt were the two cornerstones of the revitalization of, and I think we, we are revitalized, I think we're going forward on the revitalization. I don't buy this theory that the town is not revitalized yet. We have a, over a hundred million in construction going, has occurred the last two or three years, so. So anyhow, Rick, you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, looking forward to it.
Good.
I'm really happy to be back here.
Let's see some pictures.
A little bit about me, just a, a little bit about me and then a short story before we get into this. I grew up in Massapequa, when Massapequa looks like more, more of a four. It's almost rural, but not quite. After college, I moved to California for ten years where I was involved in the building trades. Everything from electricity to roofing to framing, and finally ended up as a Finnish carpenter, working for an architect who inspired me to go to architecture school. So I began school.
I think Larry's just, because, is just asking you to use the mic?
When I was thirty years old, I went to Cal Poly and got my degree, finished in nineteen eighty-three, and moved to Matituck in nineteen eighty-four. Uh, about a year later, I moved to Hampton Bays, and I've lived between Hampton Bays and Southampton, where my office is, since nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five, about that time. One day, we had, we were working on the Sag Harbor Village Police Station, I'd just finished Southampton Village Police Station, did a lot of work for Southampton Hospital. I was reading The Traveler Watchman, which I never do. Never saw the paper hardly from South Fork, but I picked up a copy, and I saw an ad in the paper that intrigued me. It was a help-wanted ad for an architect, as a display ad in the middle of the paper somewhere. I went, what is this? I think I'll answer this ad, so I made the call. A couple of hours later, about this time of year in two thousand five, I met Bob Castaldi on Main Street in front of the theater. It was a little drizzly and foggy, and we stood there in the middle of the street, shook hands, and Bob told me his vision. He told me what his budget was, he told me what his timeline was, all within a few minutes. And I thought, this guy's out of his mind. This guy's out of his mind. Let's see what he's got going on. So we unlocked the front door and walked in.
We're gonna be good.
It's gonna go?
Rick, right.
I did. Down?
There you go.
There, it takes a second. This was the lobby in nineteen eight, in two thousand five, rather. And, um, we were talking earlier, Bob and Vic and I, and when people walk in the lobby, it's a, it's a kind of an, oh my god moment now, because it's really gorgeous, and I'll show you a picture in a minute. Um, there's another spot in, further into the theater, we have a, we have a, um, name for that place too. So the theater, it was dark and dank, some of the lights worked, some didn't. Bob wasn't even sure where all the switches were at the time. The theater, uh, as we toured through it, I realized that this theater had some really special things about it. Um, we went down to basement, a man's favorite place, always, and, um, the place looked like a Jules Verne movie. There were old-fashioned, uh, electric boxes, and what you see in the middle there, it's hard to see with the lights, um, is a heat exchanger that took river water from the Peconic River and used it to cool the building. Really innovative technology in nineteen thirty-three. I was inspired. This is one of the other places in the movie theater where people come to, and, and it's another, oh my god movie, a, a moment, rather. When you look into the theater itself, into the auditorium, it, it's just beautiful, even at the time. It gripped me, it was magic. And I went from, this guy's out of his mind, to, wow, this really could be something. It smelled bad, you couldn't see, there was water dripping someplace, and I said, yeah, Bob, I wanna do this. So it began. One of the first things we came up against was, what do we do with these almost nine hundred seats? There's nine hundred seats in there, god, who restores these seats? How are we gonna do this? That began, sparked a thought about how to do it, what to do? Are we really gonna put all these seats back? How are we gonna make money selling these seats? We're gonna do weddings there, we're gonna show movies there, what are we gonna do? It's a beautiful place, but how do we make money? We gotta make money. It's not a not-for-profit, it's gotta make money. It had other issues too. The mechanical system, as I mentioned before, although it had some really good ideas, it was an antique. It had ducts that I could walk in. The duct work itself was amazing, but it was old-fashioned, and it wasn't up to par, we couldn't replace that. So we had to do some studies, you see on the lower left, we're on the roof with our engineers. It's a local guy from, lived in Riverhead at the time, Brian Frank, um, Bob, myself, and some other engineers, talking about how to deal with this H V A C system. As time went on, short time later, we ran a fundraiser. And you can see from these three posters, we did one for the auditorium, one for the restoration, and one for what we envisioned as the future of the building, that you see on the far right. All three of these included an addition to the back. In fact, when the town bought the property, R T K L Architects had just done a, a full set of restoration drawings. There were probably almost a hundred pages of drawings that I received, uh, blueprint drawing, old-fashioned blueprint drawings. And those drawings included an addition on the back of the theater for the future. So it had been in the plans the whole time. The town knew that it was necessary, they knew it was gonna need another source of revenue besides itself. And like so many other community assets, like recreational centers, for example, um, if you have a swimming pool, there's so many municipalities in this country that have swimming pools. And I've been involved in the pool, swimming pool, public pool business for a long time. When you have a public swimming pool, it's very rare unless it's really a, a high-end training facility that the pool can support itself. So it has to go with synergistic accessory uses. Uh, it's either part of a Y M C A, or it's part of a hotel, or it's something else. This is similar. It's an asset to the municipality, a great asset to the municipality, always was, is now, and always will be, as long as it's done properly. So we wanna be very careful about how we do it. So in this process, we came up with three goals. One was to convert the theater into a cabaret with tables and chairs. At the time, there were only a couple of these places in the entire country, one was in Colorado and one was in New England. So we did some research on that, talked about how to make the tables and chairs work. Do we wanna make the tables and chairs convert back to an auditorium again? Spent a lot of time doing that research. In the end, there's tables and chairs there, and they're convertible for different uses, weddings, different-sized tables and so forth. The second one was to terrace the floor. Not only to terrace the floor, but to do something innovative again, to keep that innovation going. So instead of using river water to heat, to cool the building, we're gonna use radiant, a radiant heated floor to heat the building. And that's installed, Bob did that. The third thing was to plan for an addition to the stage that supports additional res, revenue in the future. I thought I put that second D in additional, I guess I just.
Okay, we got the idea.
Come on. So six years later, the theater finally opened in twenty thirteen. Uh, the picture on the left is, is in the construction process of terracing that floor, uh, the one on the far right too, and then the ones on the bottoms were the, the really beautiful restoration that Bob and Diane did on these very important pieces of deco art in this building. And I gotta tell you, they did a really fabulous job. That Bob's been in the restoration business in New York City for a long time. Um, he made his money as a businessman there and bought this out of his passion for what he had there. And it gripped him and it gripped me. So there was innovative thinking in nineteen thirty-three with the cooling system, in two thousand seven with the radiant heated floor. The exploration of geothermal, we thought about using that, it turned out to be not the best way to go. And we used some advanced insulation to keep the building from overheating or, um, and, and being able to control the H V A C system. When we put hundreds of people in there, at three hundred and forty B T U's per person, it changes the dynamics of the space very quickly, so we had to be very careful about how to do that. Now, in twenty nineteen, we're planning an addition to this thing, which also needs to be very special, and we wanna use innovative thinking here too. We wanna use an all-electric H V A C system that will allow each space in the building that's used to have its own meter. The theater will have one, the commercial spaces, if there's one or three, will have one, I'll get to that in a little more in a minute. And each one of the apartments will have their own meter, so they'll pay their own electricity. Insulated concrete forms are I C F, you might hear, as a construction material, is relatively new to this country. It's been used in Europe for about twenty or twenty-five years, and I'll explain a little bit more about that in a minute. And then, we want to pursue a sustainable construction goal, like LEED or some other third-party green rating. These are some of the finished pictures of Bob and Diane's great restoration. The upstairs lounge, we turned into a bar, and, and the bathrooms actually only had two stalls in the men's room and the women's room, so we had to bring those up to code. Really moved some things around upstairs and, and made the whole place work very well. And has anyone, everyone here been to the theater? Has anyone not been there?
Sure.
It's a great experience, it really is.
The grand reopening was a blast.
Oh, yeah.
With the antique cars and the paperboys and.
That was a fun, fun night, wasn't it?
The girls.
Yeah, fantastic.
That was great.
So here we are in downtown Riverhead, the arrows pointing to the addition on the theater. And you can see it pretty clearly in white on the back of that more narrow rectangle. This is, um, on the upper left is, uh, an image of a, um, insulated concrete form, which is like an overgrown Lego block, kind of. It's two pieces of styrofoam, they come in, in, um, sixteen inches by thirty-two inch and various other, uh, modules. But what you do is, you put your steel reinforcing, you stack these things up, just like Lego blocks, and you put your steel reinforcing on those, uh, little channels that go in between them, uh, that fit right in. that fit right in, everything snaps into place, so they don't have to be wired. It saves a lot of labor. And floor by floor, you lift the building and pour concrete per floor. It's a really exciting process. You can see on the right side, one, a building that has its first floor, first floor walls in place, ready to be poured. And then another innovative technique that we like to use in this is called the Hambro Joyce System. Because this is a five-story building, we have the opportunity to reuse our Joyce System framing so that the slabs can be poured and we can take the, the forms out of the slabs and reuse them again for the next floor. Saves money, saves materials. It's a greener, more sustainable way to build. And then on the roof, there's potential for twenty to thirty kilowatts of solar photovoltaics. We don't want to use the roof as, as a public place or for occupants of the building. We talked about that. There's lots of issues with it. We showed the railing on the roof in Greg's submission because above a certain height, buildings have to have guardrails. So we never did really intend to put people up there for any kind of reason other than perhaps maintaining the roof. But there is an enormous opportunity for a solar photovoltaic potential. And you'll never even see it. This is a project we finished just a year, year and a half ago, the Hampton Maiden Motel, which achieved a LEED gold certification and is made out of these ICF building blocks. The upper left is, is just the raw, the raw blocks that you see with no finishes on them. And then the other pictures are the finished product. On the outside, all you, all we did was stucco it. And then we put a rain screen, those wood slats on, on around the rest of the, the walls. And it gives it a nice finished look. It's a modern building. It fits in very well with the owners. Now, it's their sixtieth anniversary. They have, they have fifty units there on the site that they've been operating for four generations. These eight units that we built allow them to now operate this building year-round. They've never been able to do that before. And it's been very popular for them. It received some AIA Design Awards. And the owners love it, the people who stay there love it. I've had people who stay there come immediately to my office and say, we want you to work for us. Another big advantage of these ICF building blocks is that the acoustics of them are terrific, especially for a multifamily or a hotel application like this. The sound, the sound transmission through these walls, you, you just heard some sound guys. Sound transmission through these walls is very, very minimal because the interiors are filled with concrete and then there's foam on both sides of that. So you don't hear any noise going through those between units. So here's some statistics for, for what we're proposing. The, the lot coverage, and I want to go over the lots because when Bob bought the property, there were actually three lots that he purchased that went along with the easement and the reason for the easement. And I'm going to explain that in a minute. The total of those three lots is eighteen thousand nine hundred and, I think, ninety-eight square feet. The area of the proposed addition, the footprint on the, on the ground level is five thousand six hundred and forty-three square feet. The area of ramps and steps in the easement, by the way, there's no building construction, no occupiable construction in the easement at all. It's just for the purposes of ingress and egress to the ancillary uses of that building. There's also two hundred and nineteen square feet of ramps and stairs on the property, on, on the theater property itself. So there's a total lot coverage at this point now of seventy-nine point five percent. After the last round of comments, we took about six and a half feet of, off the west side of the building to make that eighty percent. And by the way, the original building on its original lot exceeded that eighty percent itself. So the easement coverage as a separate entity, the easement is, that's not the right number, sorry about that. Easement size is not eighteen thousand square feet. But the easement coverage is thirty-five percent, which is correct. Somehow those numbers got mixed up. Apologies. The building footprint itself is five thousand six hundred and forty-three square feet at the ground level. And the existing theater is nine thousand two hundred and forty-eight square feet. It looks like my columns got a little bit mixed up. The area of the proposed addition is the same as the footprint. And the total lot coverage then is seventy-nine and a half percent. On the back of the theater at the stage level, so up at the stage level, which is about four and a half feet above the orchestra, the lowest level of the auditorium floor, there's five thousand four hundred and, six hundred and forty-three square feet of addition. That's gross square feet. Twenty feet of addition to the back of the stair, of the stage, which will allow just about any act to perform back there. Behind that, there's a tour office, two star rooms with bathrooms, four dressing rooms, two large green rooms. Is that an F? It's a freen room. A kitchenette, laundry, backstage lobby, handicap bath, and mechanical spaces. Above that space, directly above it, there's a commercial space that could house one to three separate spaces. And above that, there's apartments, eight one-bedroom apartments and twenty studio apartments. There's separate storage units within these, and I'll explain how those work. There's six, fifty square foot units and twenty-five, twenty-five square foot units that would be available to tenants of the building for bicycles or kayaks or, or the toys that most apartment dwellers just don't have room for. So this is a diagram that explains those three lots and the lot coverage. It's a little hard to see on the screen, but it, it's clearer in your, in your handouts, I think. The pink on the right side is the original theater. The green space that you see is one of the lots. And the blue space that you see at the top, kind of overlapping, is the second lot. The, the hazy white surface over that is the proposed addition. That light gray color is what we propose for stairs and ramps. And the dark gray color is the boundary of the easement that was granted back in 2005. You can see that there's no occupied building that occupies any of the easement space. And in fact, there are ramp, there is two hundred and nineteen square feet of ramp and stair space that's, that's on the private property. So this is a floor plan of the addition to the backstage. The beige area, darker beige area is the addition itself. You can see how that attaches to the stage. There's emergency egress directly from that in the northwest corner, or in the west corner of that beige space, as well as a lift from the alleyway that would allow acts to bring in special equipment, larger equipment, grand pianos, and so forth. Then there's ingress and egress stair for the rest of the apartments. And those three boxes in the center lower portion are a recycle center that's, that I'll get into a little bit more later, too. The rest are green rooms, dressing rooms, bathrooms, a kitchenette, and laundry. Second floor up. Now we're looking down kind of at the plaza that, that incorporates the, the stairs and the ramps to the, that allows us accessibility to that commercial, those three commercial spaces. Again, that can be one space or three spaces. The rounded corner helps identify the entrance to the residential space. And that's a double, a double space. There's mailboxes in the first level. And then to get in, into your own space or access to the stair, you have another set of locked doors to go through. So you have access to the stair and the elevator. So there's, there's actually three exclusive entrances if the commercial space were considered to be one. One for the residences, one for the commercial space. And you don't see it in here, in this image because of the sort of half-level issue we have with the alley. But the top space that says display space, that's just to the right of the upper stairway, the alleyway goes, at the alleyway level, there's an entrance to the backstage theater itself. And it takes you down a half a flight of stairs, just like the steps that go down where the lift is. So the rest are planters between the stairs. There's a monument that sort of centers on the alleyway so that it, it's the sort of guiding light from Main Street looking, looking north towards the parking lot. It's a place marker at this point. You'll see it in, in some 3D images. It doesn't have to be exactly what it is. It could be anything, but I like what it does for a number of reasons. And we've studied how to get from grade to this five and a half foot higher space a number of different ways, and I'll show you those, too. At this point, I think what's most important to the theater and the operating, the operational needs of the theater is a place for acts to park their cars, park their trailers, park their vans, buses, those, all of those things that these artists have, that they need to have in close proximity to the theater, that very few of these performing arts theaters can provide. So where I, I admit I put those three handicap spaces in there quickly as kind of a placeholder. What really should happen there is that space I have designated on the left side for the artist parking. I wanted to get back and talk about this a little bit down the road, but for now, we're going to move on. Was there a question that I hear? No, okay. So this is the first level of apartments. On the very right side, that extowed portion is the high portion of the backstage theater. And then along the wall there, there are some of the storage spaces that will act as an, help act as an acoustic, acoustic barrier to the goings-on of the theater. On this level, we have two one-bedroom apartments and two studio apartments that face north. The two studio apartments have balconies on them for a couple of reasons. One of the reasons there's a lot of glass that faces north is because the north side of this building will never see direct sunlight. The sun will just never get in there. So lighting is very important, not only for the commercial space, but for these residential units. Also, privacy. If you want a lot of light in, you don't want a lot of glass because it sort of reduces privacy. But by adding these balconies, we still allow a lot of light, have a lot of glass, and we add that element of privacy so that people can't look right into those windows, but have that barrier. On the floor above, which is the same as the second floor, third and fourth floor of apartments are all the same, we have those same two studios in the middle. And then we have, we have four one-bedroom apartments around the perimeter and two studio apartments that face south. The upper ones have balconies that protrude towards the south over the back of the theater. And I'll, I'll explain that in a minute.
Can I just ask, projected size for your studios?
Yeah, they're all under four hundred and fifty square feet, mostly around, around four hundred and thirty. They're, they're all written right on there, if you look carefully, you can see.
Very carefully. It's, it's compliant with the code as far as the size of the bedrooms.
Those are studios?
I don't want to, but it just.
I was just asking a question. I don't have to.
I just, I mean, instead of, and I don't, I don't want to cut them off, but some of the issues that were raised, I mean, like in terms of going through like a floor-by-floor walkthrough of how many apartments, I mean, that's sort of ancillary to some of the larger issues that were raised. I mean, parking, you know, parking would be the, the first one. You know, the, the first floor retail, providing no parking. And I mean, it's something that wasn't even really contemplated is the artist parking. I mean, it just, it seems like that's a larger issue than the, you know, how we're going to recycle or what size the apartments. That, that seems to be a much larger issue that needs to be addressed. I understand the code doesn't provide parking, but in terms of a secret review, how these things are going to impact, that, that's something that absolutely needs to be addressed.
We know that. We just want to give everybody an overview of the project in detail. And they, yes, we agree with you. We all agree.
Size of units and stuff like that, I mean, as, as long as it's code compliant, I don't really feel the need to go through every floor. I, how you configure.
That's the last floor we're going to go through, because all those are the same. This is an elevation of the building. I'm going to skip to the next one.
That's what's, I think, very important to the board, is the elevations.
This is the, this is the south elevation. An image that you'll actually be impossible to see from anywhere unless you're standing on the top of the theater. This is the east elevation.
So, so the south, the south elevation rises how far above the theater current?
I don't have a number on that, but it's going to be about thirty, thirty-two feet.
Yeah, it's going to be thirty, thirty-two feet.
We, we have a 3D picture we're going to show you. It's coming up. I might come back to these elevations in a moment. I want to explain the difference between what we presented earlier and why we, why I'm doing this. I want to go back to this one. The picture on the top left is what we had proposed initially. And I explained the way we want to construct this building as a, as a 21st century method of construction. And a very efficient, both cost-wise and energy-efficient way to build. So when you do this and then provide lots of glass, you'll notice that this glass is different than what we proposed in our earlier submission. There's a, a sort of trend in architectural design to use slats, wood slats for lots of different things, separations, as rain screens on the sides of buildings and for decoration. So these slats that I applied on the upper-left corner, I, I use because they, they're logical in a number of ways. They allow us to have floor-to-ceiling glass as a sliding window or a sliding door with a fixed screen on it. So it's not really a, a door that you can walk out of, but it's a door-type of apparatus. And these slats would then create the barrier from inside to outside, so, and the safety feature, so you can't go through that opening. But it allows light to go through it. Very interesting light because it's filtered light. And very interesting views because from afar, it looks almost opaque. But looking at it out from it, from a close distance, you can see outside, like any kind of a netting or screen, you can see it. If you, the closer you get to it, the more you can see out of it. And the farther away you get from it, the more opaque it seems. So these things have a big advantage. Now, I knew it in concept when I presented these drawings to the town. And the presentation to the town, I want to get back to in a moment. But I knew that we wanted to use this kind of system. And I also knew that it had to be special in a way. It had to have some kind of conversation with the deco style of the original building. I knew it had to be there and I knew that it was important. And I just had not had time, because of the way all of this has been developing, to really take a hard look at it. We only got word last week that we're going to be in front of the board. And I wanted to give the board some idea of what we're going to do with this because there had been a comment about the elevation drawings and maybe the fact that they're not quite consistent with the immediate architecture. But we want these buildings and, and most municipal historical preservation councils and so forth understand that new buildings should be of their time. We should not match historical details. But it's okay to have a conversation with that historical style. So what we're doing here is we're, we're having that conversation with that deco style. And we're doing it in a way that makes sense functionally and physically. So the very horizontal look of that upper photo on the left, on Monday, I thought, okay, I want to make this deco connection. So I turned these things down, these slats that are about six inches apart. Right now, they're, they're drawn as two by sixes, six inches apart. Right now, they're, they're drawn as two-by-sixes, six inches apart, and they stop at forty-two inches above each floor, okay? When they come to the entrance, they curve gracefully down and end at the top of the entrance, which has a, a little overhang that protects the front door. So, I've had this kind of in my head for a long time. And on Monday, when I began to put this presentation together, I looked, I was looking through for old photos, old files and so forth, and I noticed that the Suffolk Theater logo looks almost the same as that. That kind of curving fountain, in this case, the lines are going up. In this case, on the building, they're going down. I, I hadn't noticed that, made that connection until Monday morning when we, when I began putting this thing together. But it's pretty important. Another thing I wanted to point out in this slide, some of you have a handout that has that photo in the upper-right corner. Those are little round glass blocks that you see in sidewalks in New York City. As I was printing this, this program this morning, I was going through last night's mail, yesterday's mail, and I get, I get that card in the, in the upper-right photo, that's a new way to build these things, these little glass block things that allow daylight to go into the floor underneath. But they're translucent, you can't see through them. So, last time I met with Bob, we were talking about that plaza level and how important storage, the storage requirement is for the theater. And we thought, well, maybe underneath that plaza level, we can take advantage of that so that instead of that plaza being a slab built on, on grade, so we wouldn't, so we would fill that and pour a slab on top. If we built it as a room for storage and then accessed it from inside, it would provide a huge amount of storage. It wouldn't even have to be heated. But it's a great opportunity to find some free storage space.
Yeah, I really appreciate what you've done on the inside, but I think that as the town board, we care about what the outside's gonna look like, and we care about the items that, I mean, I know that there's a lot that goes into these plans, and I appreciate your architecture and your design strategies and things of that nature, but, you know, what you do inside the building, you know, that's what you do inside the building. And I know that your relationship with Mr. Costaldi will get him where he needs to be as far as the inside of the building. If we could just focus on the things that this board looks at, which are the aesthetics, the easement area, the parking, and, and what we need in order to move Seagra along, that would be great.
Okay. I wanted to bring that up because there was a comment made about that there was building being, that we were proposing construction of a building inside that easement, and that was not the case.
Yes.
Okay, but if we used it for storage, maybe that is the case. I wanted to put it out there.
Okay.
Here's a cross-section through the whole property from the front to the back. This helps explain how, how that grade level rises towards the back of the building and how we need that plaza space with the stairs and ramps to get to it. So, you can see the auditorium slopes down. As you come into the theater on the far-left side, there's a, there's a basement area underneath that space. You come into the lobby and you get to the back of the auditorium, slope down. There's the stage level where the rest of that stage and the added space to the back of the stage is all at the same level. But by the time you get to the back of that, natural grade is already six feet above that floor. This is a diagram of, of one of these latest recycling centers, so the apartments would have their, their own trash disposal. Nobody would have to walk down the halls and out the front door with trash.
Could, could you just, just repeat that, the, the north-south section? So, the, the, the north, north side elevation would be what total to the, to the, to the top of the, the flat of the roof, not to the fence line?
Do you have it in the renderings?
Yes, it's on.
The actual distance from grade to like first floor and then up to the.
Yes, I also have it on drawings.
I know, but she's just, I've been concerned about that overall height in the back.
I think it was fifty-nine and a half.
Oh, the, the total height of the back is fifty-nine and a half feet above grade.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right, so that's all in the easement line. So, yes, I just had another question. When you were showing the east elevation, when you said that there was no construction in the easement, all of this portion, the steps coming up, the elevator, that's all to be placed in the easement?
I didn't say there was no construction, I said there was no occupied space.
Well, the elevator would be occupied, correct? You want in use?
It's not considered by construction.
It's a hoist to get the equipment from the trucks into the theater.
It's not occupied by occupied, I mean residences or, or conditioned space.
But there'll be mechanicals, non-movable mechanicals there, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Which was the original intent of the easement, so that you could get everything into the theater?
Yes.
Outlined in the, in the easement.
Which is what we asked.
I'm gonna show you in a minute. I'm gonna show you in a minute the design for a ramp that complies to code for the right slope and how much ramp it would require and how much space it would require to use a ramp instead of that lift. So, the lift came after many iterations of designing ramps that were both aesthetically pleasing, functional, and code-compliant. It was very tough to try and get that in in a compact way that wouldn't eat up more parking, it wouldn't eat up more of the easement. So, the lift became the most, the best way to do it. It takes up the less space. Although I'm very intrigued with some of the ramp designs we did, it eats up a lot of space and it costs a lot of money. So, the cost of this lift that would be operated, uh, one at a time, ends up paying for itself.
And then I have one other question. On the, on the, um, on the west side, where we, where the current alleyway is now.
That's the east side.
East side.
East side, I'm sorry. Where the current alleyway is now, when that, it will stay the same width all the way, and then to the apartment building, there'll be an elevated wall there? That will be a common walkway for the apartment building, is that correct?
I'll show you some more pictures that'll explain that really clearly.
We have these side elevations now coming up.
So, these are images that show the building from, from various places in the street. This is from about a block west of the theater on Main Street, looking east and a little bit to the north. You can only see the top two floors of, of the theater. And, and behind us at, in this image, you're blocked by the church so that you wouldn't see the building. This is the first place you would see the building if you were driving east on Main Street. A little bit farther along, almost to the theater, which you can see just on the right, you'll see again the top two floors. And I'm, I'm standing now.
South side of the street.
On the south side sidewalk, at about five feet where, where our eyeballs are. This is the next place you'll see it, which is about a block and a half to the east side, looking back at the theater, you can only see a little piece of it. This is from the back parking lot. And there's that logo on the top that was just totally circumstantial, and it came to me as a big surprise on, on Monday when, when I pulled that up. Here, we're looking straight south from the parking lot, down that alleyway on the east side of the building. There's planters in the way, and there's that monument that I mentioned that will be a focal point, looking north from Main Street. Oh, and here you see one of the ramp designs that goes back and forth. It, it ate up about thirty, thirty-some feet out into the easement.
So, I, I, I'm just, still not clear. It, where, where the alleyway comes out, right? So, you'll have to come, if you're coming from Main Street and heading towards the north parking lot, you have, gonna walk down the alleyway, and then you're gonna have to make a right and go around because there's going to be building?
There would be stairs there, yes.
And, and those stairs go to where?
They go.
To the plaza.
To the plaza?
I'm gonna show you a few more pictures. If you're still unclear, I'll, I'll.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, just for ease of use and access to the theater, have you considered anything else that would, that would sort of connect, you know, your connection to the theater from the back parking lot? And make it more inviting there? I mean, that is a public walkway there, and it seems to be being, the access for the public to Main Street seems to be kind of getting buried here.
Well, it's not getting buried, it's.
I think it's enhanced rather than buried.
Yeah.
But you can't go up those stairs and go down, you can go up those stairs and down on the other side?
Yes, you could, but there's no need to do that because you can just walk around them.
You just go around and there's, there's plenty of space.
Nope, you gotta come here, now you gotta walk out and around.
Here's another one, looking, looking at an angle towards the southwest. Again, this is, this was before we put the lift in, so you'd see a lift there instead.
Yeah, that's kinda weird.
So, you're saying where that wall is where, is where the lift would go?
Yes.
So, that's why you can't have stairs coming down that side, 'cause that's where you need the lift?
We need to get access up onto that plaza, and we need to do it in a code-compliant way. We need to do it in a pleasing way. And of, of course, lighting is gonna be one of the most important aspects of this design.
That was always the intent, is, I mean, you gotta. I, I just. Trucks have to get the equipment out of the trucks, the sound systems and what have you to get into the theater, correct?
Correct.
That's on the other side of the building.
That's on the other side of the building.
The load-in area would be on the west side.
Just, 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 you know, kind of one of the things that we're doing as we're trying to revitalize the downtown and try, one of the things that we're, we're trying to look to do is create some common space. And, and just for you to consider that as you're, as you're moving along in these drawings, this seems to cut off some of the common space to go to the church there, to get, get from the parking lot to the theater, to access it that way. It just seems to cut off some of the common space as opposed to enhancing it.
Church is on the other side.
Well, it's on the same size as where you're, where you're proposing to put some, some stuff in the alleyway there, is it not?
It's in the.
No, on the other side, okay, yeah, 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 okay. But it just, the, the alleyway coming through, I think, I think that's a common, a common area that people use.
Right now, you're walking around a stockade fence, and I think this is, I think this would be more defined, I think, I, I don't know.
I, I'm just, it's just a comment.
Is there going to be?
It's been on, on our minds too. And this plaza, this stairway, the ramps that go up and down, I showed people in there purposely because I think people will gather there, and there, there will be a public place. It will be a place that invites people to come and relax. It's not a private place at all, this is a public plaza. And just like public plazas in urban atmospheres, between buildings, you have public plazas with fountains, with monuments, this is the kind of place that's going to attract people, not turn people away.
But the, but the staircase then comes down into the alleyway there?
The staircase, there are two staircases. One heads north towards the alley, one heads, I'm sorry, one heads north towards the parking lot, one heads south towards Main Street, which is narrower. And then there's one that exits off the west side of that plaza towards the fire lane and the entrance to the back of the theater.
Okay.
The plaza that he's referring to, one of the early presentations when we were talking about the downtown code changes, remember the POP I was referring to, the privately-owned, private space? I mean, privately-owned public space, that's what we're kind of from New York City, this would be consistent with that.
I guess that's what I was trying to say, so you walk down the alleyway, you can walk up steps into the shops up here? That's.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at, I thought there was no stairs on the other side.
And obviously.
Then you go down right across.
Okay, that's what I'm.
If you happen to stop at the shops first, or if you live in the room, you just come down the stairs and head south.
Head to Main.
And you're in the alley.
Okay.
And obviously.
If you're a store, and you're, you're parked behind the building, you, you, you take the, the north stairs and go down.
So, the east side of the building, the, with the addition, that will be well-lit so that it'll light up the alleyway, because I know that that was a concern that we had at the public hearing last time?
I, I think that the alleyway should be a, a pleasant experience, an inviting experience. We worked very carefully in Sag Harbor with the alley between Division Street and Main Street when we built the police station there. And, and actually designed a veterans memorial walk that went down that, that occupied that alley. We, that alleyway needs to be an experience that's, that's fun and exciting and anticipatory and brings you from one place to the other in a pleasant way. It'll be well-lit, it will be designed nicely, and it'll be a beautiful experience. Right now, it's kinda harsh.
Okay, so I just re, I wanna just ask you to look at the minutes from the public hearing that we had when the neighboring building came in and said that there's no sight distance from Main Street to the back parking lot so that if a police officer's driving by and there's something happening in that alley, then the police can't see them. So, I just want you to look at the minutes from that hearing and look at what the people had to say, and, and tell me how that's going to be addressed.
You mean when the police are on Main Street?
Yeah.
On Main Street, and you're looking up.
Or in the back parking lot, and they're looking down the alleyway.
Okay, alright.
So, just think about that, that's all.
Okay.
I remember that meeting.
Well, the lighting, the lighting has to be, the final site plan, we have to have a lighting plan in there, we will. And we definitely are going to improve the lighting in the, at the alleyway. 'Cause it's kinda, like, like Rick said, it's kinda dreadful now, so we wanna definitely improve it.
That what you're doing is not an improvement, I'm just saying that I'd like you to go back and look at the minutes from that hearing and try and maybe even talk to the neighbors.
Actually, we have a picture right here.
This next image is an image.
Right there.
From the sidewalk looking north up the alley, you see that monument. It'll, it'll be better lit than I'm showing in this photograph.
So, the stairs gets removed from there too?
This is the alley that has the stair, the wire staircase on the outside?
The, has the fire escape.
Yes.
Okay, 'cause that doesn't show the.
Yeah, does that remain there, the fires?
Oh, it has to remain.
Yeah, it has to.
I was just wondering if you could put it somewhere else.
It is in the picture.
Absolutely not.
There's no place to put it.
It's gotta stay there.
So, it comes off the mezzanine, that's why it has to.
Oh, it's mezzanine, okay.
And you can't, yeah, there's no other place to put it.
Oh, the upper fire stair is not in that picture, you're, you're right about that.
Yeah.
But you see right through it, it doesn't, the fire stair doesn't block any, any view.
I just, I think what you're doing is great, I just think that going back and look at that, those minutes might be helpful when you're looking at the lighting and you're looking at other features in that alleyway.
Will do that. So, this is a 3D illustration of the back of the theater. It's pretty much the same explanation as the floor plan, but, but the next image shows from both angles how this gets developed on top of that. And the next two, next floor above that. The next floor above that. And then the completed building from a bird's eye perspective.
Exactly what we're talking about in the Downtown Revitalization Committee is that we didn't wanna see all that bulk of height on Main Street, and it's so far off of Main Street that I think it's appropriate. Stick something, you can see it.
Last image is, is just from the corner of that, actually, it would be inside the building that's there.
Absolutely.
So, I wanna thank you for listening.
Are you going to address the parking? You said you were gonna get back to that.
Yes, the parking, we understand fully that the parking is an issue these days. When Bob and I met on that rainy day fourteen years ago, there was nobody in the street. It was a Saturday morning.
You could've slept on the double-yellow line for an hour.
There were people sleeping on the double-yellow line, weren't there? Tim, can you tell us?
Now, it's different.
Now, things are different, and we do understand the need for parking. I showed, I, we, I, I explained some of the, the issues we had with the ramp and how much space that took up. When I removed the ramp and, and got all that space back, I thought, boy, the town's really gonna like this. We'll put some parking in there to the degree we can. And it turned out that the parking stalls showed up on the plans a little bit too small, just from computer glitches. But the idea that the theater really needs a place for their acts to have access to this, to their space, to their space that they're renting, or, or they're using to perform. And the, the functional relationship between the inside and that space is very critical to the, to who the, who the, who, which acts the theater can attract and which ones wanna come and, and return and come back to this thing. So, the better job we do with that, the more vitality we're gonna provide for downtown Riverhead. This building is a jewel. It's an asset that the town can't ignore. We have to think carefully, and, and we're pleased to talk to every one of your departments, including the planning department, about the parking.
But you're not proposing any parking, is that correct? You're losing parking.
You physically cannot provide parking because the support area, first of all, the stage, which is about a thousand square feet, that starts seven feet below grade and goes thirty-five feet above grade, so that's out. Then you have the support area, that's gonna be five feet above grade. There is no place to put anything there. Not to mention that just the, 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 the space is, it's a small space. By the time you provide parking, you, you can't have a theater. You can't have a the, you cannot have a theater and parking.
The ma, the majority of the.
Well, you can have a theater and, and you can. Well, you can have a theater and, and you can have a theater in space, you wouldn't have the apartments.
No, the, no.
Because you wouldn't have the part, provide parking in the parking.
Because the, 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 the support area, which is approximately seven feet below grade, uh, you can't have midgets running around, it's gotta be at least ten, eleven feet, yes?
Yeah.
So now, now you're approximately five feet, five and a half feet above grade. So you're the height of, of an average person, let's say.
No, my, my point, my.
Where, where, how, how do you, how do you park on grade?
No, but the parking, the park, the, yeah.
What if you eliminated the retail use, I mean, there's three thousand square feet of retail use.
Use is sitting on top of the support area. The support area, for all practical purposes, the support area is the basement to this building, which ends five and a half feet above grade in the back.
I can answer you, Greg, that's a good question, and, and I looked at it very carefully. It turned out that we could probably put about eight cars in there. But the ramp to get up to that space would occupy more space than we're allowed in that easement to begin with.
But my, my point was, the with parking is required because of the apartments. So you could meet the parking requirements by building out the theater without the apartments, that was just my point.
My understanding is that the parking is not required under current law.
Under current apartments, correct.
The apartments are sitting on top of the support area.
I understand, I was just, I was just, I was just.
Yeah, so you.
Making an observation.
It, it's irrelevant if the apartments are there or not there.
You can't provide parking.
You cannot provide parking.
Right, the way, it's like the other guys would do on Main Street, because they just built the complex above grade and they were able to park the cars. Uh, also, on the easement, the current easement that has parking on it, the stripe parking, most of that parking will be available all the time, because we don't, we would, we don't foresee with this new plan that we would have to, uh, interrupt the parking for, because the way we're gonna service the building now. So that's always gonna be, it, it's our right to use that easement if we need it in the future. But most of the spaces that are designated there now are still gonna be parking, so. We're not really taking that away.
A couple.
There's a couple we're gonna lose by the nature of the, the plan, but that's about it.
Couple things about the project. Um, first of all, I agree that the theater is a jewel of Riverhead. And the restoration that's been done in there is amazing, we got a tour in there not long ago. And it's beautiful, I think I'm the oldest one at the table, so I actually saw Mary Poppins and Gone with the Wind there. Um, but my concerns are, obviously, the parking, I mean, it, parking is one, because, well, you're losing, really, you're, you're down eighty-three spaces, because you're losing twelve, and you should actually have seventy-one, correct?
Well, there's no requirement in the code.
No, I understand that, but it's still an issue, it's still an issue, because parking is.
Here's the issue, the parking district eventually has to be expanded. I think Marty has a plan to pick up sixty-one spaces back there.
Sixty-seven, to take out trees, get to take out islands.
Whatever that cost is, will be shared equally by assessed val- fairly by assessed valuation, including the Suffolk Theater. Whatever capital improvements are made in the parking district, the Suffolk Theater is gonna pay their fair share through the, that's the reason we have a, a parking district. And actually, over, over time.
It doesn't quite work that way.
You're still down eighty-three spaces, anyway, let me finish, I have a couple other points.
Excuse me, uh, councilman, let me just say this. The parking district was created because we don't, it's not required to provide off-street parking right now, according to the code that's on the books right now. And, and this particular project, we can't provide the parking on our property. And whatever improvements have to be made, the district wide would share in that cost and be put on our tax bill. It's not the taxpayers are gonna pay for the improvements, it's gonna be the taxes.
Well, I mean, I like, I mean, there's many things I like about the project, certainly as someone who's done, I did community theater for a lot of years. I'm excited that you're expanding the stage, I understand why you're doing a lot of the things with the project. Parking is still a concern for me, we're still down a lot of spots. Um, in looking at the building, I mean, I do like that you put the art deco slats on there, but I just don't think it's enough. For me, the building isn't in keeping with the character of the area, and from all the different elevations, you do see it sort of popping up over things. I think it changes the look of the downtown area. To me, it still looks kind of like an apartment building with all the gl- I'm not an apartment building, an office building with all the glass. I mean, the art deco is on there, but it's not enough.
Not to interrupt you, but just to address that one point. What you're looking at there is, is, um, a different three D model that was developed early. So you're seeing long expanses of glass in that model. Um, the more recent proposal, and you can see it in some of the other drawings in that handout, um, show more divided up space.
What's, what page were those?
Beginning.
Probably in the beginning.
Of course, we're only, we have to go through the ARB and Landmark process.
We definitely want to address this.
Open to make.
I'm aware of that, I'm fully aware of that. Kind of an ARB limo.
I, I don't know if the proportions of those slats are quite right yet. So, there's a ways to go with this, and, and it's, it's one of the reasons that, why I, I wanted to develop this thing within the community itself, I, I don't want to force this design on anybody. But I do want to provide you with a concept, I wanted to mention to you that the conversation, the conversation between the deco style and modern building is important. What's not important is to try and mimic that deco style, which would be impractical as well as nonsense these days. To try and rebuild that now. Uh, I'd also like to mention that when that deco style was built in nineteen thirty-three, I'm certain, although there was no code or review, a review board at the time, I'm certain that the Victorians of those times were going, what the hell are you guys doing down here? What are you building? The deco style was not accepted by everybody.
And the Greek architecture was definitely saying.
There were revival styles, there were Victorian styles, we just saw a presentation about some of the most historical styles on the East End, none of which had anything to do with the deco style.
Okay, Rick, what would you say the two thousand nineteen style is for architects across the, the country?
I would say the two thousand nineteen style is, is clean, simple, practical, sustainable.
It also has to be able to fit in with the rest of our downtown to some extent. Um, so that I'm just offering my opinion, you know, from every elevation that you showed, the building didn't look like it fit in with the area. Um, and the, you know, I do think the slats were good, but they're just not enough. Um, but it'll be going to ARB and Landmarks, I, I presume as well, so we'll get their opinion.
Two things. Um, first of all, I, I pretty much forgot what both things were, we're sitting here waiting so long to talk.
Well, market rate is fantastic.
How, um, how long do you expect the construction will take? And will it have an effect on you being able to be open for performances at some point in time?
Question, that's it, what we do not, what I do not want to do is break the momentum.
Right.
And astride of that theater, because, uh, we've paid dearly and worked hardly to get it to where it is. We're, this theater is on the map now, people know we're here and they're coming. Um, so the, 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 the way I'm, I'm thinking this out, and I've gotta work this out with a structural engineer, is to put the footings in the, the existing theater on the northwest and the northeast corner. Drop the footings, drop a steel column, put a truss, uh, across the back, um, at the roof level, thereabouts of the, of the existing theater. Tear down the parapet wall, and then tie in or support the roof onto that truss. Then, and this is where it gets tricky, it gets real hard, uh, is to build the stage. All right, the, the thousand square feet, do that footing, build, build that stage area. Then temporarily, and this is either, either by moving, I remember that, that trailer is on wheels.
Right.
So either we reposition, uh, the trailer, which is not easy, because now we have to tie it into the sewer, we have to move water, electric, but, you know, I've gotta look into that. Either that, or, um, put a temporary green room in the extension of the stage, that thousand square foot, which is more than enough space, put that there, finish the rest of the support area. Then, close, or, or finish the building in the support area, finish the support area. Um, there's a lot of temporary waterproofing and temporary, uh, uh, covers that have to be done. Uh, then, uh, tear down the wall. The exist- once, once that whole structure, tear down the existing wall between the rear, right, the rear of the theater to the new stage area. And then it's a matter of tar- tying in the wood floor, uh, electric, all this other good stuff, and then tie it in. Hopefully, I mean, this is all a good idea, until you actually do it. Uh, but hopefully, we're not closed more than a month, three weeks or a month. Yeah, I mean, that wall will come down.
January?
No, it'll.
Tear down that wall.
Well, you'll have all the stuff done.
Yeah, but you, 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 you get everything as ready as it can be, and then it's, I mean, I used to tear walls.
Oh, I can knock a wall down pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a lot easier tearing them down and putting them up.
The second thing I wanted to mention is, and it was touched on earlier, that the revitalization of downtown Riverhead certainly has started. Um, and it has started because of the Suffolk Theater and because of the Long Island Aquarium. So I thank you for your investment in this town, because it really started the turnaround for things to become much better for our downtown Riverhead. It is a, and I've described it as a, as a hidden jewel, the Suffolk Theater, this theater. It's not so hidden anymore, because word has gotten out, and, and you see it with, with the following you have.
We get, uh, you know, information from where everybody's coming from, they put them on our, our email, and, um, we're getting people from the tri-state area now.
Absolutely.
And people, people are coming out from the city, they're actually coming from Connecticut, uh, New, you know, New Hyde Park, massive people, or anyplace.
Customers stay at the Hyatt.
They're staying, and if we do a special event.
I'm in the theater all the time for the shows, and they, people we sit with, oh, we're here at the Hyatt, or we're here, we're staying on Route fifty-eight at the, one of the hotels, they stay overnight.
They make a weekend out of it.
They make a weekend out of it, so.
If we're doing, if we're doing a special event, um, you know, they're, they're staying in the local hotels, they're having lunch. They're going out to the wineries, they're walking up and down Main Street, Chuck.
It's just, it's generating itself, because yesterday I was in the Hyatt, and I was there with the owner of Sunny's Grill, Jim. And Jim was thanking the Hyatt, because the Hyatt is sending their customers down to Sunny's Grill for breakfast, because they have a limited breakfast at the Hyatt, and it just, everybody's helping one another then, and this thing is just snowballing.
When we eat, when we, when me and my wife eat outside, you know, somewhere, at, you know, I don't know, it's like six-thirty, seven o'clock, everybody leaves.
Right.
Because we know, not everybody, but most people leave, because I know.
And the Italian place, uh, I can never say. No, not Michael, well, Michael is gonna be great, but the one you had your pieces from. He's doing good business from the new complexes, you know, they're delivering up there, and now he wants to open up a second space. And when we had this dream twenty years ago revitalizing Riverhead, not to quote our famous friend Rob Pike, you know, his synergy of activity, create a synergy of activity, where people live, work, and play in a community. And, and that's what's happening now, so I honestly, to get on my little point, I'm so sick and tired of hearing people, what are you gonna do to revitalize downtown? We're doing a lot to revitalize now, and it's everybody, this town board, previous town boards, the developers. Do we have a ways to go? Absolutely, but we're gonna get there, and it's working, so that's what I'm saying. And this is another piece of puzzle.
Fix itself overnight.
Every business, like Rick said, you know, you get the synergy, every business starts to, starts to feed off of other ones.
Right.
And other ones come in, uh, dry cleaners and, and it, it just.
Right.
Have more restaurants.
Look, if you have, if you have a vibrant town, you, you're gonna open up a little jewelry store, a little craft store.
As far as the parking, I, I would, unless it's so, I saw it, I mean, I looked, I didn't look at it closely. But I mean, Marty seems to have a pretty good plan, which should be implemented right away, I mean, I don't, I think, I think the parking district. I think the parking district committee has a, uh, I used to be on the parking, they approved it, and that's something the board should do right away. And we'll pay our fair share, we'll pay our fair share, whatever has to be done.
I think that's important, to me, I don't think the parking issue is, is a, is a stumbling block at all, because part of the parking problem, you, you created yourself by bringing people to Riverhead, which we appreciate. So, the parking problem will take care of itself one way or another, if you have to get structured parking. Um, but that whole design with Marty's design, I don't know if the board, if we really look at the final.
We have, we haven't, we don't have the, we don't have the final.
Because I, I mean, I, I'm typically very.
Three times a day. Judgment, and I'm just saying something like that.
I want, I want some, some.
Don't we own the corner house too, Jody? That corner house we bought from Marty, yeah.
Yeah.
Tear that down and put some parking, whatever, whatever we gotta do.
I grew up, I grew up in Long Island City, uh, and that was a parking problem. Because literally, you had to park five blocks away, and, and, and then, when you got up in the morning, you had to pray to God that your car, car was there.
Oh, right.
Somebody to steal it on.
You know, years ago, people said we had a parking problem. You know, years ago, people said we have a parking problem in Riverhead, you know what it was? There was nobody to park downtown to do anything, okay, so.
Can I just bring up a few points back to the site plan?
Sure.
So, I, the aesthetics and the ARB and Landmarks, obviously, they'll address that and they'll make recommendations to the town board. As far as staging during construction, do you plan on staging in the parking district property or in the easement area?
Um, we, we, we have twenty feet on the west side, I, I, I don't, I can't, you know, of.
You'd come back with a plan as you move.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, I mean, it hasn't, we haven't thought it out that, that far, but, oh, yeah.
Because when you're staging, you might be reducing more parking spaces in order to put the containers there, or whatever you're gonna need during construction. Um, so I would present any staging plan in your site plan application as far as what you will need from the parking district. Also, as far as drop-off for the residents that are in the apartment, so if I go out and do my grocery shopping on Route fifty-eight, I come back, is there a drop-off area, or are they gonna have to park, you know, at the back?
Oh, you're talking about for a.
Park at the back stall and then carry their groceries up, or?
If, if, if that's it, I mean, we've got three, three, three spots.
Carry all the groceries upstairs, so there should be a drop-off.
Rick's gonna take a look at it.
In an area in the lobby where they can leave their belongings, or just drive up.
I believe the gala project.
Drop their twenty bags of groceries off.
We've got three spots that are gonna be used for, um, for performers. And that, they really, they come in, you know, so, so during the day or on weekends, they'll be available.
Just something I want you to think about.
To the tenants.
Rick's gonna take a look at it.
Yeah.
He said he'd take a look at it.
Well, the, um, yeah, and yes, you guys are bringing great shows. I mean, the night, I remember the night I, Art and Parks, the whole town was bustling, because you were packed out of the theater, people at Art and the Parks. I just think that a couple of things we need to, you know, push forward and get them right, um, the parking, and I'm concerned about the look. But also, just one last thing, Greg, even, if they're in the historic district, even if they don't get state funding, they still have to comply with SHPO, the way I understand it.
SHPO, they will be an involved agency, um, once the secret process goes forward. And I mean, I have spoken with people at SHPO about the building, and I mean, they, they've commented on just the art director and the.
They're not overtaxing, I mean, Petroselli had put that behind that.
That stuff will all be flushed out through the secret process. They will get a referral, they will, they will be consulted.
You see what's attached to the president. You see what we did with the theater, we wanted to do the same thing, I mean, we wanna make it beautiful.
Yes, it did, complied, it did, go through SHPO.
I think you're an ass.
It will, it absolutely will.
I think you're an asset in downtown, and I think everybody wants, you know, you're very dedicated to moving that forward. You know, you, when you came in, you said you were gonna do a great job on the theater you have, it's beautiful. You know, you said you were gonna put in a room to have other acts there and, and more performances, and that's what you're trying to do, so. Um, but there is, you know, you know, being, being the town board, we also have to look at the details. So, you'll, you know, I know you have questions with Greg to work, to work through the details. I also have one other question, are you still looking to do not pro- not-for-profit for part of the theater for, just, just because there's a consolidated funding application coming up that not-for-profits can apply for? Um, that they'll have a, they were gonna have a, um, a, um, informational session over on the sixteenth over at the Hyatt, I don't know if you wanna send somebody.
Right now, even though we're for-profit, I am the not-for-profit.
But you may, may wanna just send.
But, but, we, we're, we're not spring chickens, and the, the future of us is. We'd be having a different conversation if I was thirty.
You just wanna send somebody over to that on the sixteenth at the Hyatt.
Some, somewhere down the line, that, that, we, we, we did actually get a, a group of great people together, and, uh, um, and then we kinda got sidetracked, but that is the, that's the future. Uh, you know, we can do this as long as we can do it, but, uh, non-for-profit.
I think a portion of it you were talking about, for doing some, for the Performing Arts Center, I thought you had talked about a portion of it.
Well, no, the, the, the non-for-profit would take over the.
Operation.
The whole thing, the, the, the new, the new, uh, support area, the new part of the stage, the whole theater.
Yeah, don't rush into that.
Yeah, no.
We like your tax money.
Thanks.
Yeah.
And so, you know, but, you know, that's the future, I mean, you know, you're only here for so long and, and.
It just might be, it just maybe if somebody goes, takes a, a listen to what's going on there, it just maybe, maybe not this year, but years down the road from now, might just know what.
We did this and we enjoyed doing it and, um, it wasn't easy.
I know.
But it was satisfying.
Yeah, it wasn't very smooth.
And it was, and it was good and we'd like to see it, uh, continue and continue and continue and.
Continue.
Right.
Take care of it because, uh, not making.
It's a labor of love.
They're not making nineteen thirty-three art deco theaters anymore.
And market.
Well, every detail was intended to, there.
We, 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 we went through great.
Thank you, Greg.
Perfect.
Bravo, bravo.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Kick that aside, thanks a lot, Greg, thanks for almost finishing, we appreciate it.
Standing ovation.
Catherine, for the record.
Thank you.
Now we're going back to our regular ways.
You saw what?
I know, and I don't think it was like it was a new movie, but.
Don't you guys eat?
I know, because I thought, well, I made myself some, really. I had my first date there.
To that movie though.
Won't talk about that on camera. I can't remember who it was with though.
I don't, I don't need it, I, I really don't need it.
All right, we'll move on to resolutions at this point, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good seeing you.
Thanks, thank you.
I gotta, I'll be right back.
Jim, do you need something to eat? I got some food in my office.
No, I, my daughter's going on a golf match and I normally run her clubs and stuff, but I, I didn't know we were gonna be here till five o'clock.
Who scheduled this day?
John.
Well, you know what, it's been three weeks of the dream.
But I'll be right back, I looked at all the resolutions and I'm, there's only a couple on the, no, I'm just about.
You're very good at it.
I'll be back before work, second.
By the way, we did pick up a new investor, Daniel Preston, his name is Daniel Preston, he's up in the Lake Little Falls.
Thanks, Vic, thanks for the information.
Hey, look, I know him very well, remember, I had to interview him.
Yeah, all right, so. I'm just trying to get my.
Jim said he read the resolutions, so. Before the resolutions, right?
I'm just waiting to get my computer out. I'm not connected. Diane, do you have yours out?
I do, you can use your.
Do you want, you, you, yeah.
Yeah, I'll put it down, I'm okay, I've got a printout of just the, uh, the summary.
I might have gotten it, hold on a second.
There you go. Do you want?
Oh, I might be connected, I'll.
You might be.
I got an answer to yesterday's question. No.
So you thought she's sticking around for resolutions?
You know where I had to get it from, my kids.
Yeah.
Because social media is a buzz, of course. And it, and of course, it's true because it's on the internet, it's true, so.
Yeah, trust them.
All right, shall we start with resolution? Resolutions, first is appoint a student, uh, appoint student intern to the accounting department. Uh, the first three are appointing, uh, a student intern to the accounting department, so I will go on to resolution four. Uh, that is to appoint a temporary student intern two to the fire marshals division of the Department of Land Management. Five is, uh, reappoint a temporary student intern two to the town engineers department. Yeah, it's in season.
Yay.
I know, reappoint a temporary office assistant to the tax receivers office. Seven is, uh, appoint a call-in recreational aide to the recreation department. Eight is appoint a groundkeeper, a groundskeeper one to the building and grounds division of the town engineering department. Nine is ratifies the appointment of a seasonal assistant beach managers to the recreation department, but I think that date has to change till April nineteenth, is that?
Yeah, because the board signed it, I think on the fifteenth or the sixteenth, so.
Okay, so just.
April nineteenth?
Whatever the date that it was ratified. Um, ten is ratifies appointment of seasonal beach attendants to the rec department. Eleven is ratifies the appointment of salaries for two thousand nineteen seasonal personnel for the Riverhead Recreation Department. Twelve is, uh, changes the status of, uh, part-time police officers, I believe that's what they've become seasonal for the summer. Fourteen is, is accepts the resignation of a maintenance mechanic two.
Oh, did you do thirteen?
Thirteen.
No, you skipped thirteen.
Sorry.
You just skipped the homemaker.
Sorry, accepts the resignation, accepts the resignation of a homemaker.
I don't ever understand.
So I will be on to fifteen, uh, reclassifies the title of account clerk typist, uh, this is part of civil service, they've changed account clerk typist. They, it's the same, uh, job, but the title is now account clerk. Uh, the same with the next one is reclassifies the title of a senior clau- account clerk typist, it will now be a senior account clerk, guess nobody's typing anymore. Seventeen is establishes standard workday for elected and appointed officials. Eighteen is.
Where is the?
That's for Ed Dennis Neskey, Stan Carey, and Jill Woodson.
With their workday attachments, that's very good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Eighteen is reappoints members to the town of Riverhead Wildlife Management Advisory Committee, we're reappointing, um, people whose terms had expired.
They do a good job.
They do a very good job. Um, nineteen is reappoint members to the senior citizens advisory, um, council, I believe that is re, uh, instating Joan Packard.
Yeah, that's when we redid and made them alternate years and four-year terms, so.
She is on top of everything.
She is.
Uh, next one is approves chapter two fifty-five of North Fork Event Company, uh, North Fork, North Meet South, uh, Farms Food and Drink Festival, uh, which is June, uh, eighth and ninth.
And that sounds really cool.
That really does.
I know, I'm excited about it.
That definitely caught my eye.
And I'm curious as to when this application came in because we're gonna be adopting it on May eighth, which only gives them a month to actually advertise the event and actually, you know, tell people. So I think that that was brought up at the Business Advisory Committee is that we have to kinda give them more time to be able to approve it and then have them advertise the event. So if that came in in February and we're just approving it in May, that's problematic. Does it say when it came in, Jody, in there within the resolution?
In the packet.
Sometimes it says when it was delivered, but I can't, I'm not seeing it right away.
Yes, February fifth.
Okay. Yeah, so we're just approving it in May and the event's in June, we're only giving them thirty days from the date of approval to advertise the event, I'm sure they've advertised it as of the date they submitted it, so. We gotta kinda. Probably had to pull a lot of things together eventually.
I was gonna say, was it a complete application that was submitted on the fifth?
Probably not, probably not.
So, you know what, we can, we can, we can, I, I think that is in assessing how we're doing with the two fifty-fives.
Yeah.
We can create a page spreadsheet when they were submitted, when the application was complete and when the approval came to the, uh, town, so if we could track those for this upcoming year.
Yeah, it's important, right, right. No, I think that's important too.
So, you can do that through your office, thank you.
Yeah, yep. They're probably already doing it.
Okay, thanks. Um, next is approve the chapter two fifty-five application of Tanger Properties Limited Partnership, Tanger Outlet Memorial De- Week, Memorial Day Weekend Block Party, Saturday, May twenty-fifth. Have they had fireworks there before? I just was.
I can't say I remember fireworks there.
Because, are they s-
Where was it? Where are the fireworks going to be?
I, I just remember reading this application, like, you know, we get them sent to us, the applications, I thought I had seen in this that they were proposing fireworks.
I'm sure the fire marshal's been involved with that, if they are, and made sure that there's an area that's separated off.
Nothing in it says fireworks.
Yeah, so maybe they, maybe that was.
I can check the fire marshal.
Yeah, just, I'm just kinda curious what hap- what happened with that.
I remember Tanger Reba setting a fireworks.
I don't either, that's why I was surprised when I saw it.
There was someone who wanted to have an event there with food trucks and, um, I think that maybe there was fireworks involved in that, I'm not sure though, yeah, it could have been a different one, but, um, we'll check into that.
Though maybe it was a different one, okay. Okay, um, next is approves the chapter two fifty-five application of Muddy Princess Corp. Gonna have to put a wig on for that one, Tim, it's all women.
What is it?
I think it's an all-women's race.
It is, it is.
Running through the mud.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, next is approves the chapter two fifty-five application of Long Island Antique Power Association Annual Spring Big Rig Summer and Fall Shows. Uh, next is approves the chapter two fifty-five application of the Titan Run, um, corp, Dan, can we put them all together for, so we can.
We can, yes.
Take them as one.
Yeah.
Um, twenty-five is approves the chapter two fifty-five application of Zamora Entertainment, this is the Mexican Live Bull Riding Rodeo and Concert, I thought we did that already.
Oh, Tim was doing it on Easter.
They had more than one, yeah.
Tim, isn't that what you did on Easter?
Yes.
Yeah. Did you go there?
I put a voice on my head.
I read it on my brain.
We can run that on, on, on channel twenty-two. Um, next is approves chapter two fifty, uh, app- two fifty-five application of the Race Awesome. Twenty-seven is.
Oh, this one was the one I wasn't sure was supposed to still be in there.
Oh, um, we're gonna.
Okay, yeah, all right, well.
We're gonna revisit this in executive, actually, I was just chatting with Dan Formick, so.
Okay.
So we'll leave it for now.
Twenty-eight is authorizes town clerk to publish and post requests for proposals for Youngs Avenue landfill testing, maintenance, and monitoring. Twenty-nine is something, uh, authorizes to supervise the executing agreement authorizing the town to accept funds from Suffolk County Office for the aging to supplement the town's expanded in-home services for elderly program, and that's who the homemakers work. Uh, thirty is, is authorizes to supervise to execute a license agreement with floating upweller systems in East Creek.
You didn't say Flopsy.
I didn't say Flopsy. Well, authorizes to supervise to execute an agreement with, uh, Flynn Stenography and Transcription Services for transcription of town meetings. Thirty-two is ratifies the assignment of fund balance in the general fund for the mun- municipal garage.
What is that?
This is for the, um.
For the used, uh, wrecker that, uh.
Yeah, so that was money from eighteen that we put in, that, from unassigned fund balance to assigned fund balance to cover the cost because the bid didn't come in, um, in time.
This was from the budget that was adopted in twenty seventeen to put it into twenty eighteen and then we just never bought it?
No, it was a twenty, it was a twenty eighteen budget, budget, and they had gone out for bids, so instead of putting it into unassigned fund balance, it is now in assigned bu- fund balance to be used to purchase the wrecker.
Yeah.
So it, it, it has a, it, it can't go anywhere else but to do that.
Right, but we budgeted for it in twenty seventeen.
Twenty eighteen, it was in twenty eight, twenty eighteen, it's from the twenty eighteen budget, we're moving it from the twenty.
Right, so twenty seventeen is when we adopted the budget for twenty eighteen.
Okay. Um, but it's, okay, uh, Riverhead Lofts Water, uh, Main Extension Project number sixty-one eight-four, budget adjustment. Thirty-four is S-Power Secret Expense Budget Adjustment. This is NRP Holding and Acquisitions LLC Water Main Extension, water capital project, six hundred ninety, budget adjustment. Uh, thirty-six is Plan Four Rehabilitation Capital Project, eight-one-nine-five-three, budget adoption. J- Jody.
What number is that?
This is number thirty-six.
Did you do thirty-five?
I might not have. Yes, that's an, uh, yes, I did, I did, um.
Actually, you're going slow for you.
I know. Number thirty-seven is Plan Five, uh, Maganese Removal Project number eight-one-nine-five-one, budget adoption, giving Jim, uh, the opportunity to get back. Um, thirty-eight is awards bid for town of Riverhead sale of obsolete surplus highway department vehicles equip- equipment as is conditioned. So they bid out for that, they, they actually did a very nice job with that, that Jill did. Um, thirty-nine is authorized to purchase a used dump truck for use by the town highway department. Um, forty is authorized notice to bidders installation of water mains and aperture, I never said, appertices, NRP Holding Tractor Supply Company, Riverhead Water District. Authorizes settlement of claim made against the town of Riverhead. Forty-two is, uh, ratifies acceptance of donation of high-water rescue vehicle for the use by the town of Riverhead Police Department and that is through the United States Department of Defense. Forty-three is authorizes the removal of fixed assets. Forty-four is adopt a, oh, I'm sorry.
What was forty-four?
Forty-four adopts a local law amending, um, is Bob, can Bob come in for this one? I have a question about this.
This is the one we talked about, right?
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, we took out two oh eight and put on just two ten.
Yeah, this is.
That's what I wondered.
Uh, well, this is the one that, that Bob had wanted to split in half, but we had held the public hearing open, I believe, for both sections of it, so I don't know that we can necessarily adopt part of it when the public hearing is left open for the original code, so, uh, let's just have him come in to explain it. He felt that you could do this, but we, we can have him come and explain it to the board.
I continue on with the.
Order, order establishing lateral water main extension for the proposed vistas. Forty-six is order establishing lateral water main extension for NRP Holding Tractor and Supply Company, is that really the name or is that an initial or something?
It looks like initials.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Um, uh, forty-seven is public interest order in the matter of the increase and improvement of facilities at Riverhead Water District in the town of Riverhead, Suffolk County, New York. Forty-eight is authorizes to publish advertisement for requests for proposals for update of the town of Riverhead Comprehensive Master Plan.
Uh, Laura, uh, Bob's office and planning actually were tweaking a bit of this, so, uh, they're gonna try and get it ready for Tuesday, if it's possible, they might be two, two weeks.
Pull it. Okay.
I just wanted to let you all. I will check with them, so possibly you won't see this on the agenda.
Okay, um.
That's it.
Yeah, but I had sat down with the clerk and requested that the access to Minitrack be available to all the town board members, so when department heads send over resolutions, that the town board would get a copy of that resolution because I've requested resolutions be in the packet today that are not in here and I don't know if Bob prepared them to put into the packet because I'm not having access, full access. The only people that have access to the resolutions that are be- being sent in by department heads are John Marafino and the clerk. So I want the town board to have full access to all resolutions that are being submitted by department heads and I would like that resolution in the packet for Tuesday.
Well, you have to, if, do you have the resolution?
I asked Bob to prepare it, I don't know if he did because I'm not seeing him.
Do we wanna check if, do we, can we? Okay, we can ask Bob if he thinks so, okay, good.
Yeah, I think that the board should have full access to all the resolutions that are being sent in.
Yeah, I agree, we just, we need to be able to see them, we're not seeing them.
Would there be any reason not for us not to see them? I can't think of any.
Well, it, we haven't.
We can't, we just access to see them, we're not sure not to be able to change them.
It's never. Traditionally, it's never been done that way.
What'd you say?
Traditionally, it's never been done that way, in the past, um, when they were, we were doing paper, the supervisor's office would bring them to me the day of the work session.
Mm-hmm.
I never saw them, just the supervisor's office, um, it was always done, and when I contacted, um, the Granicus people.
Maybe it was because of time or something?
Well, no, let's. It just wasn't done, they, and they, they were shocked that I was even asking about that, they said it, they have never seen that done. Okay, well, I would like to know when department heads are sending resolutions over because department heads obviously have needs and I, as a town board member, wanna know what their needs are.
Bob, have you come up with that?
So, I, I can't have the chief of, the chief of staff or the supervisor's office and you deciding what's important for me to vote on or not vote on.
Well, it's, it's, the agenda, I draft the agenda and bring, bring the resolution forward, any board member, any board member can bring a resolution forward uh, to, to the work session, um, there is not, there is not a, a problem with that, that, that's how it's supposed to go.
Okay, well, I asked Bob to prepare a couple of resolutions.
I, I, I didn't get to them and I apologize, I don't know if there's three votes, but I, I, I can get them.
It doesn't matter if there's three votes, the supervisor just said that anybody that wants to bring any resolution forward can bring it forward, so.
Well, I kinda stuck last Thursday in a debate about whether one person should be directing it, but I, I, I'm not looking to argue the point, I'll do them, uh.
Oh, you're saying to direct.
Well, you were requesting, but this is two different things, Jody, Jody is asking about Granicus, having the board members have access to, 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 before the ge- agenda is presented
Okay. Right.
for the, for the work session.
Yeah, I, I.
And, and traditionally, that has never happened before, it, I would like to be able to present my agenda.
I can only speak to.
To, to, at the meeting when I, when I present it, I think it's been done, how many years it's been, it's been forever?
We never had Granicus.
That I know, that I know, always.
It's been, it's been done that way?
We never had Granicus and Granicus is supposed to bring us into the twenty-first century, so we never had Granicus before.
I can only.
So now we have Granicus where all the department heads are sending it in by email rather than running it down to Tara last minute and saying this has to get on.
But that's not, that's not necessarily.
Why are you fighting it? I wanna know what department heads need.
And you can certainly talk to the department heads about it, it's, it's, Bob, I will let you.
No.
Well, I'm not sure I can answer the question because I'm not sure if I understand the question, um. The, the request was made that the resolution be done to allow for Granicus process to be amended, which is a change, I, I think in the way the town board proceeds. I think, but, uh, maybe I'm, I'm wrong, I know that when the prior town boards were in the building, the ones that I. I think, but, uh, maybe I'm, I'm wrong, I know that when the prior town boards were in the building, the ones that I worked with, the process was the town supervisor would gather up the resolutions, walk down to the town clerk. Uh, you know, put them together, and then, for work session discussion, and then for town board meetings.
Right, and then we moved to-
The only thing that Granicus changed was, was the process by which it was done, it was done from an electronic means. So, from a town board procedure, it's, it's sort of been done that the supervisor would gather up the resolutions, but if the town board wants to change that, I, I did ask Diane to look into it from the standpoint of Granicus.
Right. Right, and they had-
And whether we can do something that allows somebody just to view, without having the ability to, to, to approve.
Yeah.
Change.
They, yeah, and they-
And that's what they're saying they can't do.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And they said that they, uh, they haven't seen any-
That's what, that's what, that's what Diane said to me, yeah.
Diane says, Granicus says they can't allow us to have read-only to the resolutions that are being sent in.
They have not done that.
Okay, but-
They have no, they said they have never heard of what I was asking them, they've never heard of, they've never heard of the council.
Okay, well, did they tell you they can't do it, or they've never heard of it?
They've never heard of council?
They've never heard of the council having access to full access that the supervisor's office has, they've never, they've never done it, they've never heard of it. They, they suggested not to, but they, they said it's not up to them.
Who did you speak to there, I'll, I'll get the name of the person, but I would like the contact information for the people at Granicus, so that I can just clarify that, because department heads are sending in resolutions on things that they think are important to them, and they're never making it to us, it's being stopped.
Um, I can't remember, it's in-
So, and, and until it's clicked off by the supervisor's office or by you, bringing it forward-
I don't, uh, Jody, can you, can you get, I, I don't understand what that means. I mean, there's, if a department head is, is looking to put a resolution forward, if we put the resolutions forward, as long as they're, as they're done, you know, there's many times that people will put resolutions forwards that are not done, there are other times people will put resolutions forward after the time where it's allowed to be put in, and they say, I want a resolution to put, be put forward there. And that, you know, structurally, that's a problem, that's the decision that's made in my office.
Okay, well, I would like to see what the department heads need, when they send the resolutions in.
You know, to bring the agenda forward.
Why don't we, you know, I think-
Tim, do you agree?
I'm, I'm fine with leaving it as it is, but why don't we talk, why don't we, let's not belabor this, why don't we talk to the department heads and, and see if this has been a problem?
Every department has-
I do agree, because I agree with what Jody's saying, because there have been times where I've come in here expecting to see a resolution, and the resolution got pulled, and nobody was ever contacted to me, or nobody ever contacted me, saying the resolution was pulled, or why it was pulled, so, I don't like the surprises when I come into a meeting.
But you certainly can, you certainly can, you have access to the agenda, I mean, would you like access, access to the agenda earlier?
We could do that.
I mean, I think, we could do that, I mean, we could do, we could do access to the agenda today.
We could do that.
I think, I think what the problem is, I, I-
No, I wanna know what the department heads are asking for.
Then, they would know, then we would know if something got pulled.
If something was on there or not, and then, and then you can-
Problem is, if I put in a resolution, I expect it to be there, and when it's not-
But, Tim, when has that ever happened?
Um, give me a second.
A few times.
Well, just let me know.
It has.
Let me know when that's happened.
Okay, I will, I'll, I'll get back to you.
And you can bring forth any resolution at this table.
I get that, I, I know that, I know that, but I'm not prepared to bring it forth when I think it's in the packet and it's gonna be there and I show up here.
But, I don't, I don't, I don't, if you could remember when that happened, because I don't think that, that you, you've ever called me and say, there's a resolution I went on here, and the resolution has not been in the packet, ever.
I'm trying to think of what it was. It, it definitely happened. I'm just pulling this out of thin air.
I, I told you for this.
I'll get back to you with what it was.
Okay.
Bob, the other thing that we, we discussed about with, if one person comes to you and requests a resolution, don't do it.
I, I want it to get done.
I, I, I don't think you should do it, I think you need three, because why are we gonna waste your time to do a resolution and get it together if we don't know if there's support for the resolution? So I think if you have-
So, what's the, what's the, so, do you want me to shoot around or an email just saying, I've been asked to do this, are there, are there, is there support for, support for this?
So, so I-
Yeah, but you shouldn't have to do that either, whoever's coming to you with a resolution really should've done their work and said, okay, you know, Catherine, I, I wanna do this, do you support it, and, and Laura, do you, I've got, okay, I've got three, so, here we are.
I will do that. Okay.
I have three people. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say that I have to disagree with you on that, I think if any board member has a resolution that they would like to be fu, bring forward, and they contact the, the attorney's at, office and request that resolution to be drafted, I, I think that's okay.
I think we're wasting their time.
Well, cause-
Well, that, that is out of respect for the town's attorney's office, we would hope that, you know, that doesn't occur often, but, but I don't think that, that if somebody wants to bring, bring a resolution forward-
I know it has occurred in the past, and I know I've had this conversation with the town attorney's office about it, that it definitely has occurred in the past, and that's why they really prefer that we have three, that, when you go in, yeah, I, it, it's me, Laura, and Jody, Bob, I want this resolution, okay, no problem.
I think it's Bob's discretion to have a conversation with somebody about that, um, but, but I think if there's a board member that wants a resolution drafted to be able to bring to the table, I think that, that is their prerogative.
Especially if it's a minority, you know, person on the board, but like, I've asked for a resolution, I've been asking for over a month, I think, Bob, that a resolution be put in the packet to vote on whether or not the town of Riverhead would pursue an Article seventy-eight against the Suffolk County IDA for granting those tax exemptions, and it hasn't been in here, and when I brought it up to the supervisor, she said, you can bring any resolution you want forward, Jody, so if you wanna call it to a vote, then bring it forward, and let's call it to a vote.
And then the responsibility lies with you to get the resolution to the table.
Not if, not if the town attorney is being told not to draft the resolution.
I wasn't told not to do it, I just, I just didn't get to it, I just didn't get to it.
Yeah, and that's a ridiculous statement.
Okay, well, then he needs clarification, that if I call and ask for a resolution to be dropped, drafted as a single board member, that he's, it's in his responsibility to do it, it's been over a month, that I've been waiting.
And I think that's the-
On the Thursday.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Bye, Bob. All right, can we have, uh, first and second to go into executive sessions, personnel negotiations of an employee contract, matters surrounding a raise for an employee, matters surrounding movement of personnel, matters surrounding the hiring of an employee, matters regarding a raise for an employee, matters surrounding the hiring of an intern, matters regarding a raise for an employee, contractual proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities, or sale or exchange of securities held by such public body.